Great.
Okay, welcome to the February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the City of Boulder Planning Board. I wanted to acknowledge that Sarah Silver is not with us today. I will say that it's something good, not bad. So we don't have to worry about Sarah, but she'll be back next time. And we do have a quorum. I will call the meeting to order. And since we, Peter has a family thing later tonight. And so asked if it gets kind of late, if he could take off and skip the matters. And the only matter we have scheduled is to discuss scheduling, which both he and I are rotating off. So I think it's probably okay if he misses that. But I don't know, Helen can probably help me with this, but it probably, we need a quorum still in matters. So can the rest of us stay on for that discussion? We'll be just briefly talking about the schedule change. If everyone's okay with that, Peter, you should be okay to do that.
Thank you all.
Yeah. And then before we go any further, then I will go ahead and hand it over to Jean Gatzza to tell us about the rules of participation in virtual meetings.
Great. Thank you, David. Too many things open. Can you all see my slide?
Not yet, but could be a delay. Sometimes those, there it's coming up.
All right. So in our virtual meeting environment, the city is engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports the physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council, as well as democracy for all people, for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. They had the following are examples of the rules of decorum found in our code and other guidelines that support this vision. And these will be what will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. This includes personal attacks or any kind of obscenity of dehumanizing language, racial epithets, or other speech or behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct this meeting. Those things will be prohibited and will be enforced. And we ask that folks sign up or display their full name or the name that they're commonly known by in the, on the Zoom thing. And if you can't figure out how to change that, sometimes it's hard in this webinar version. You can send that to me in the Q and A and I can change it for you. We will have various opportunities for public testimony, the open comment, and then also public hearing. And you should be able to be able to raise your hand if you hover either at the top or the bottom of your screen, you should be able to see the little raise hand button. When it's your turn, I will adjust the setting to be able to unmute you. And let's see with that, with our open comment, our public hearings, we have a three-minute time period. And the only other thing to notice, the chat function is disabled. If there are questions about the, the meeting, or if you're having difficulties with the technical aspect of Zoom, you can put that in the Q and A. The Q and A is also not for any type of question or comment that's related to the business at hand. It's not a part of the record and our board members and staff are not monitoring it. Only Amanda and I are monitoring it just for the function of the meeting. So I think that's it. David, is there anything else? Did I forget anything?
That sounds like everything to me. Thank you.
Great.
Great. Okay. Well, with that, we, I'd like to take another minute like I did last time to, to cover something before we go into the agenda. First, I'll start out by just recognizing that this is Black History Month. And it's an important time for us to reflect on the diverse interests of the population we serve, as well as to remind ourselves how much work remains in addressing structural racism in the public realm. So on Planning Board, one of our fundamental values is to look at everything we work on through an equity lens. But as anyone who has followed Planning Board for years knows that this body has not exactly had adequate representation from the BIPOC community members. So I just wanted to remind people that this year's deadline for submitting an application for being on Planning Board, and there are three open seats, is this coming Monday by the end of the day, February twenty-first. So if you know of any community leaders who can bring diverse perspectives to this board, please do encourage them to apply. And it's on the City of Boulder Boards and Commissions recruitment page. And I'll just end by inspiring us with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King on volunteerism. Everybody can be great because anybody can serve. You don't have to have a college degree to serve. You don't have to make your subject and verb agree to serve. You only need a heart full of grace, a soul generated by love. So I just hope we can take those values forward in Planning Board and looking forward to seeing who steps up in the next year. So with that, let's go ahead and move on to item two in our agenda, which is public participation. Here is the time where the public is welcome to address us on any subject. We, you have three minutes to speak. The only restriction is that please do not discuss anything that is in our public hearings for tonight. We have two public hearings. The, the first one is an annexation agreement for fourteen twenty-two fifty-fifth Street. And the second one is a site review and related amendments to the T VAP Village Area Plan for Fire Station Number Three at twenty-seven fifty-one and twenty-eight seventy-five thirty-eighth Street. So if you have comments on either of those, either the annexation or the fire station, please do save them for later in this meeting when we have a separate, a specific public comment for that. So with that, please do go ahead and start raising your hands in the participants list. I will be looking for raised hands and I'll call on you. Please state your name and where you live when you start speaking so that we... Oh, are we using our new procedures? The new wording for, we adopted a new thing that we're going to ask public speakers to also disclose if they represent any entity in a formal way, and I don't have that language in front of me. So Jean, maybe before we do the public hearings, I can get that specific language up. But I think we're probably okay going forward for now. So does anyone want to address us in the general public hearing? I'm not seeing any raised hands. Oh, I see that Lynn has raised your hand. Lynn, if Jean allows you to unmute, you should be able to talk.
There we go. There you go, Lynn.
Sixth and Dewey. Well, I've got to spend the next month, couple months preparing for the Board of Assessment Appeals. And it's largely due to you folks passing infinite subsidies to developments all over town. I hear today we're number seven in the most expensive place to live in the United States. This is obscene for Boulder. And chasing your tails with affordable housing and homelessness. You know, just like the lower income folks and the homeless can't afford to live in Boulder, I can't afford a sixteen million dollar place in Aspen, which is the average place there. You know, and now we've got Aspen on the hill, at the Hill Hotel, Lamp lighter, Aspen there. Aspen developer. We've also got Ollie at Folsom and Pearl. Pace has a lot of Aspen development. And you know, tourism can also kill your town. And this, this is not a tourist town. This is not, I did not move here because of tourism. I moved here because my dad went to the university. And it was historically a place that our family liked to live. And now the new rent is my property taxes. I don't own anymore. I thought I owned, not really. Not the way property taxes is going up. What are you guys doing about it? Think about that. Think about an impact fee per capita. What does each person that wants to live here use in water, in rec center, in library, in all the services that this community provides? Before you make a decision on another subsidy for a third story or for extra density in an inelastic market. They will come from anywhere to be here. All you're doing by adding extra stories and extra space is making the place more inefficient, more consumptive of all of the resources that we want to preserve in Boulder, like climate change, water, all of these things. So why do it? Stop already.
Thank you, Lynn. All right. Do we have anyone else who would like to raise their hands? If not, I'll give it one more minute moment here. And then if not, we'll go ahead and close the general public hearing. So thank you for, for that. The next item on our agenda would normally be discussions of dispositions, planning board call-ups, continuations. I've seen there are none. We'll go ahead and go right into the public hearings for tonight. The first public hearing item tonight is hearing in consideration of a recommendation to City Council on a proposed, an annexation agreement amendment for the property at fourteen twenty-two fifty-fifth Street to modify the affordable housing requirements and facilitate the development of the site with for-sale townhomes. This is case number L U R twenty-two-one dash zero-zero-zero-four-five. And before we dive in, this is a, I checked with Helen. This is a legislative item because it's an annexation related. So we don't have to worry too much about ex parte communications, although I can't imagine too many people have been discussing this one with others. But we do need to disclose any conflict, potential conflict of interest. Does anyone have any potential conflict of interest on this item? I don't see any hands. So with that, then we'll go ahead and hand it over to staff. I know Sloan is presenting tonight. Charles, did you want to introduce?
I would love to. Good evening, members of the board. Charles Faro, Planning and Development Services. Sloan Walbert, our case manager, is going to present staff's analysis tonight. She'll also be joined by Kurt Fernheber, our Director of Housing and Human Services. So Sloan, take it away.
Thanks, Charles. I'm actually going to turn my video off just to help with the presentation. Okay, hopefully everybody's seeing this. And so thanks for the introduction. As the, as the chair described, the purpose of this item is for the planning board to review and make a recommendation to City Council on a proposal to amend the affordable housing requirements for the property at fourteen twenty-two fifty-fifth Street, which was originally recorded in nineteen ninety-nine. And as Charles mentioned, we have Kirk Fernheber from the Housing Division to help answer any questions you may have. And so just to sort of set the framework, annexation agreement amendments are reviewed consistent with section nine-two-seventeen of the Land Use Code, which has annexation requirements. Annexation must also be consistent with comprehensive plan policies, in particular, policy one-point-one-seven, which also covers annexation. This policy emphasizes that annexation of land with significant redevelopment potential must provide a special opportunity or benefit to the city. In this case, that was done through the provisions of creating permanently affordable housing. And then lastly, the amendment must be found to be consistent with the original intent of the annexation agreement. And Planning Board is required to make, make a recommendation to City Council. And then following that recommendation, the amendment would require approval by City Council. So noticing that the application was done consistent with the Land Use Code, there was a written notification mailed within six hundred feet and also a sign was posted on the property. And in response to the public notice, I did receive some inquiries from neighboring property owners, but I didn't receive any formal public. The property is about one acre and located on the east side of Fifty-Fifth Street between Arapahoe and Beastline. It currently contains an approximately two thousand square foot home and a variety of accessory structures. The surrounding area is single-family residences with the exception of the municipal golf course to the east. The site is zoned residential medium one with that description on the screen. The allowable intensity in this district is determined by the provision of three thousand square feet of open space dwelling unit. And just to give some background, the site was annexed to the city in nineteen ninety-nine along with six surrounding properties on the east side of Fifty-Fifth Street and also to the north along Seneca View Court. At that time, the site was zoned residential medium one. And the intent of that median density zoning designation was to provide future development potential on the properties and also just generally opportunities for affordable housing. And under the annexation agreements, as part of redevelopment, any new dwelling units on the property are required to meet the affordability requirements in the annexation agreement. The applicant approached the city last year with a proposal to develop the property with fourteen townhome units for rent. And when the applicant approached the city to discuss how the affordable housing requirements would apply, it became apparent that the agreement was not financially feasible due to the relatively small size of the site. And at that time, started a discussion with the Housing Division on how to potentially amend it so that it would be feasible to develop and also more desirable from a community benefit perspective. And so as I mentioned, as part of redevelopment, paragraph four of the agreement applies. The main provisions of that would be that they have to develop at the maximum practical density. Thirty percent of units would be permanently affordable to house for less than eighty percent of area median income. Thirty percent would be affordable based on the calculation shown on the screen, based on what type of housing would be provided. And then the proposed amendment would keep that requirement to develop at the maximum practical density. But the, they would be required to contribute twenty-five thousand dollars to the city's affordable housing fund for any new units that would be constructed within five years of the amendment. After five years, the developer would just be required to pay the standard cash and lieu fee per the Land Use Code. But a provision has been added to require that all dwelling units be constructed and sold as for-sale units. So the key issue would be whether the amendment is consistent with the intent of the original annexation package and also BBC policies on annexation. The current housing market is driving the construction of almost entirely rental housing. And the cities identified the need for more ownership opportunities appropriate for middle-income households. The amendment would enable the development of the sites and in turn add to that housing inventory of the city. It would also result in the construction of units that are more attainable to middle-income families. And then I would just point out that the cash and lieu contributions would be used to leverage state and federal funds to create affordable houseware, housing elsewhere in the city. And also at deeper levels of affordability, that would be well below that eighty percent AMI that's in the current agreement. So based on that, staff finds that development would provide at minimum and equal affordable housing community benefit than the current agreement. And we recommend that Planning Board recommend to City Council approval of the amendment as it is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive. And as we mentioned, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sloan. Okay. Well, um, let's go ahead and open it up for questions, Georgie.
I, I have, I have a lot of questions, so I don't know if I'll get them all out now or let, let other people chime in too. What I struggle with, with this presentation is, and thank you for the presentation, but it's really absent data around economic feasibility, which is what we're asked to make a judgment. And so I'd like to understand sort of the backup data around the economic feasibility of the original plan and understand what it means to be a detached dwelling unit from a rental standpoint of eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI. And understand all the, all the dollars and cents behind the presentation that was just given.
Kurt, do you want to tackle that one?
Yes. Good evening, Planning Board, and thanks for that question. So the, the annexations that we bring forward, we don't typically have the expertise to do the financial analysis of them. When we update our inclusionary housing ordinance, however, we often hire a consultant to run that analysis for the, for any kind of changes to the, to the policy. I, to try to answer your question a bit, I think what we found when the applicant first came in, they were putting forward a rental application or rental development, which was in line with the original annexation agreements. And what they would have had to done, or what they would have had to implement was a certain number of units at eighty percent of the area median income. We don't have a, an affordable housing program for rental for eighty percent of the area median income. It doesn't really fit within any of our current housing programs or strategies. We don't have a way to really manage eighty percent units. And the, the other thing that we, we've known, there, there was a study that we did when we updated the inclusionary housing ordinance about three and a half years ago, is that market rents are anywhere from seventy-five percent or eighty percent up. And so what we would be providing here, the only community benefit would be for them to provide rents that are sort of within the, the range of, of markets already. We, so we didn't see a real benefit to the approach that was in the annexation agreements. And we were also looking for opportunities where for-sale units could also be introduced. So the, the applicant is looking at creating smaller units that are for sale. And then the community benefit would be this cash and lieu approach that we could use on other developments. We've also found in many of our smaller annexations that they, they're not really being developed because particularly around for sale, because they're, they're not penciling. So they're, we, we know the finances aren't working because they're not being developed. And that's, that's what we're hearing from the community as well. So this was a way to try to stay in line with sort of the intensity or expectations of the existing annexation agreement, which didn't give us much, and to provide something that was more relevant to the housing needs today.
Thanks, Kurt. Just, just to, just to follow up on that, I guess. I, I really struggle because we, we don't have any data to make any economic decisions around. Someone's telling us it's not economically feasible. You know, a duplex that's eighty percent to one hundred and ten percent AMI, a study from three and a half years ago, how do we know that that's relevant today? How do we know that will be relevant in five years? I mean, what I see here is an opportunity to actually get some missing middle housing on this site if, if we understood what it would be to pencil. But, but all we're being told is it doesn't pencil and it's not economically feasible. But no one's giving us numbers and that's what we're making the decision on. It's, it's, it's really challenging without more information.
Yeah. So I, I, I don't think it's actually based on the numbers. It's based on the eighty percent AMI rents, which we know, we, we can't really create oversight for, you know, three or four units on a site. We will spend as much money, you know, providing the, the oversight that we do on our affordable housing units. We, we know that eighty percent units are are, are providing, you know, they're, they're providing a missing metal for rent, yes. But they're in line with what rents are currently.
Do we, do we, well, I'm sorry. You said they're in line with rents, what rents are currently. I, I don't have, I don't have any information, access to any information to say that's true or not. You said the last study we had is three and a half years ago?
Um, yeah, that's correct. Uh, you know, maybe that isn't current, but you know, even if this was in place, we, we just don't see a, a benefit to a handful of eighty percent rent units. And that's, that's not, doesn't really fit into any of the affordable housing programs that we have. You know, we, we, we don't even have, we, we would have, we would have to set up a different rent tables that we don't have for eighty percent. It would be a whole different system for, for implementing that.
We can always look at as well. Other questions? John?
Yeah, thank you. I, I would say in, in general, I have the same concerns that George just mentioned. And I would have thought that if you mentioned you hired a consultant to assist you with these issues, it would have been, I think, relevant and useful for perhaps the consultant to appear tonight and give some of the quantification that he may have used in his guidance to you. But, but on a second issue, I'm, I'm trying to understand whether this is what's changing with Boulder's affordable housing policy now that we're not even interested anymore in, in the eighty to hundred twenty percent type housing. In, are we, are we giving, giving the developers some sort of windfall here that, that I don't really understand?
So thank you, John. So the, we didn't, we did not have a consultant for this project. We don't typically hire consultants to do financial analysis of, of annexations. The financial consultant that I was speaking of earlier, related to ones that we hire when we do updates to the, to the IH ordinance. And I'm sorry, what was your second question, John?
Well, it, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if there's been some change in city policy regarding the provision of affordable housing at different income levels.
That's correct. Thank you. Um, yeah. So we do, we do have a middle income policy, which is from eighty percent to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI. But that's focused on, on ownership. And that's on rental.
Right. And what you, you say the policy is focused on ownership rather than rental.
Yes.
And what, but if I understand correctly, this project is intended to provide ownership opportunities. And so why would we not be interested in having a certain proportion of these be deed restricted, you know, affordable, permanently affordable, middle-income housing for sale?
Sure. Well, what we do know is that that's, uh, yeah, that, if that annexation was coming through today, that would, that would, that is how we would certainly implement it. But that is not sort of, it's, it's probably two hundred thousand dollars a unit to do that at a minimum in today's markets. That, that wouldn't be equivalent to the annexation that was in place or when it was put in place in nineteen ninety-nine. or when it was put in place in nineteen ninety-nine.
I I I understand, but I mean, if the if the developer had moved ahead and at that time, life would have been different. That's that's true. No matter with all projects, when there's a time delay, things change. So why is the city trying to to help him out?
And I'm I'm not sure that we're helping him out. I think it's actually what we're proposing is a much better agreement than what we would have gotten. If we don't change this agreement, we're we're likely going to get some more rental units that are going to be rented at market rates. And we're going to, and with the new proposal, we're actually getting ownership units that are small units that we've been trying to, you know, get even in the market. And we'll get we'll get some cash out of it as well that we can put towards other developments.
Thank you all. I have more, but maybe somebody else wants to take a crack first.
Sure.
Questions, Lisa?
Um, forgive me that this may be in the packet and I'm just not seeing it right now, but how, what are the ways that this could be developed by right right now, if if any, on an annex? I mean, could they put giant houses on it, for example, or?
I believe they could put one giant house on it, or they could, you know, several. Like we mentioned, rental units. They or or they could. Yeah, so that that those are kind of the two alternatives that I would see this development going.
Thank you. Yeah, so that that was really useful. All, sorry, go ahead, Sloan.
I just wanted to jump in. They do have that provision that they have to develop at the maximum permissible density. So they would, it's about fourteen dwelling units.
If we were to annex in, then they'll have that requirement.
The current agreement states that they have to develop at the maximum feasible density.
Yeah, when I when I mentioned, when I mentioned one house, there's one house on site, they they could make that into a much larger home.
They could remodel it into something and not develop separately at all. So I mean, I I think and we'll get into discussion later, but but you know, ju- just to the other questions that have come up, and as we get into planning board discussion, I just want us to understand what the options in front of us are, you know, and as we talk about missing middle housing, and we talk about wanting more for sale units and fewer, you know, corporate owned rental units, I I just want us to understand what else might happen, and that doesn't mean we have to make any true decision, but that was very useful. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. I'll go ahead and ask a question while other people are thinking too. When I looked at the the RM one zoning district requirements, it says there is three thousand square feet of open space for dwelling unit requirement in norm one. Does that allow you to go up to the fourteen units? Because that that seemed like a high number to me, to be able to get fourteen units in there.
Yeah, we we've only looked at sort of our preliminary development plans, so we haven't seen an analysis that shows that they have appropriate open space, but the applicants on the call, and they could probably answer that.
Okay, we can ask that then, but it the annexation agreement modification does specify fourteen units, doesn't it?
So it has, that's not in the actual amendment. That's background on how this discussion started.
Oh, yeah, I think I maybe I just read it in some of those background notes. But the 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 annexation modification just says to the maximum development potential. Yeah, I don't think if we can get fourteen, honestly, if we have to stick to that three thousand, because the number of acres in in or the number of square feet in an acre divided by three thousand is about fourteen, so I think.
Yeah, they might be counting like rooftop decks, that kind of thing.
Maybe maybe you could do it that way. Okay, cool. Thanks. Peter?
I had the same question. Following up on that, though, thank you for the presentation. We do not, and you kind of answered this, we do not know how many units would be allowed if it says the applicant came forward with a plan to develop fourteen and two structures connected by a pedestrian plaza. But then it became apparent that this wasn't financially feasible. I mean, they could have said they wanted to do ninety, you know, eighty units, and it wasn't feasible. Like the fourteen, I'm trying to understand where that number came from. If back the napkin math shows it's not at all, it it must have come from somewhere, perhaps the applicant presentation is going to explain that. I hope it would, because going off of Georgie's and John's points of understanding the numbers that make this up, I I would be curious where the fourteen came from, and that brings us to Lisa's point, which was, where are we starting from and where are we getting to? Where are we now? Where are we getting to? And I thought I I appreciated where Kurt was going there, which is what we will get out of this. At the, this is our chance to get something out of this and what it is we're going to get out. So the question, sorry, the question is, do we not know where the fourteen number came from grounded in some reality or not?
So if I could try to answer that a little bit, and then I the applicant may be able to answer that. I think they've looked at different numbers. I think the the fourteen units may have been attached units. A similar project, I think about three, three parcels to the north of this Toby's Lane. I think they're they're contemplating something similar to that. I think that's nine small units or cottages. And that would kind of, in their detached units. So I'm I'm imagining it would probably be, if they're if they're looking at these small cottages, it's probably anywhere from ten, eight, eight to ten units. If if they're doing a for sale product.
I'll just point out that the MR land use has the max development potential of six to fourteen units, so maybe the fourteen came from from the land use section of in the in the comp plan. Yeah, other questions? John?
Yeah. On a on a different aspect of this, the staff recommendation is for a certain contribution for each home that's built for the next five years, and then after that, whatever the standard requirement would be. Can you describe those numbers? Are those more than would otherwise be expected or or less, given the change in in rates? Or contributions?
Yeah, so that's one of the things we've noticed in some of these smaller annexations is that they 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 sit and they're not developed. So this would, after five years, bring it in line with whatever our inclusionary housing ordinance was at the time. That would be certainly a higher affordable housing requirement than than it is in this annexation agreement.
So why are you proposing this five year difference in rates?
Well, because we want to encourage the development to occur, and if it doesn't occur, you know, it would actually be a much higher requirement for a community benefit.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Helen, maybe I could ask you, since this came up a couple of times. We oftentimes don't get to see all the economics behind what might drive the things in front of us, and I know that that the the that causes head scratching from time to time. What what is our purview in terms of being able to ask to see the economics behind a lot of the drivers that, because what we see come before us? I I don't know if we can ask for that, or if if it's just based on what a particular property owner is willing to disclose to planning board.
Yeah, in general, at this point, we're discussing an amendment to an annexation agreement, so it's a, it's essentially a contract negotiation. Each party have to come to agreement for it to be passed. And you can ask for it, and and I I wouldn't say that the applicant has an obligation to provide it. It might be in the applicant's interest to provide it. But it but it's not a code requirement or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you.
So David, could I just add one more item as well? If that's okay. So I I think I think part of the challenge, and I and I really understand the the questions from planning board. The 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 intent wasn't to to get this annexation in line with how we would do an annexation today. It's to try to come up with a better annexation that's somewhat equal to the original agreement. And it's certainly our view that this this amended agreement is 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 similar to the original agreement, but we think the community benefits is is much stronger than what we would have gotten.
Georgie?
Yeah, so I I I hear all that. I I just forgetting the economics of the developer for a moment and just trying to understand what a detached or duplex townhome, I'm I'm looking at the presentation, if you see my eyes, what eighty to one hundred and ten percent AMI, what that looks like on a rental basis? I I don't, I don't, I don't understand what it is. So if we're looking at a hundred percent AMI, Boulder's AMI is a hundred and three thousand dollars, is that correct?
Oops, you're muted, Kurt.
Thank you for, yeah, that's that's for a family of three.
Okay, so a hundred and three thousand dollars, and to make something quote unquote affordable for that hundred percent AMI would be what percentage of that number?
I can do a rough number right now. Yeah, it'd be a rent of about two thousand a month.
Do we think that there are, in so in this area, a new townhome would rent for only two thousand dollars a month?
So if they were doing a rental project, it would likely be around fourteen units. And it would be, it wouldn't be a townhome necessarily.
But I I guess I I'm going back to the agreement that was presented, so I'm looking at paragraph four and the bullet points there. And it says, develop to maximum practical density. Thirty percent of the units need to be below or at eighty percent AMI. Thirty percent of the units affordable to, and then it has detached duplex townhome and attached, and it gives ranges. So I guess that's the, that's my question is, is like, how do we understand what that plan really looks like?
Georgie?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'm 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 just seeking to understand what you're saying, and if it gets into a lot of discussion, we can move it to that portion. Are are you asking whether or not you can find an apartment or a townhome for rent in that part of Boulder for around two thousand?
Yeah, I'm I'm
You can.
Seeking, I'm seeking to understand if someone was to develop this as new, if there would be equivalence, if if there is benefit, right? I that's my, that's that's truly my question that I I don't have an answer to and the data around it. Is there a benefit for developing this for a hundred percent or eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of AMI? Is there any benefit to Boulder now and in the future that we are losing out on by not pursuing this agreement? Because this agreement also has, you know, has as thirty percent of the units to be developed below eighty percent AMI. And then the balance of them to be developed at that average of a hundred percent AMI. And so I I just, I'm just trying, struggling to understand the numbers because we have nothing to go off of.
So you're you're correct that there may be, they would, they would likely get more rent from that for a new unit. But we do know that there's market units within that price range, so we're not really, we're not really adding much benefit to the overall market.
Okay, I I guess if I'm being asked as a planning board member to make a decision, I need the information to do that, and and right now I have nothing to point to, and and no one's giving me anything concrete, so I guess that's that's my concern around it. I I don't have a concern with what what one way or the other, we can get into this in discussion, but I it just feels like there's not much data here to support what we're being asked to make a decision on.
Yeah, maybe the applicant can also address, you know, I've asked the applicant to think about that, because I'm sure Georgie would like to hear your take on that as well. You know, and of course, we're talking about rental that would be coming out of the current agreement versus ownership of out of the amended, so and it's and the ownership is actually designated in the agreement, right? It has to be ownership units. So that that actually is in there, but so that's also, I guess, a consideration to think about, but yeah, maybe we can see what, and we can always invite staff back in for more on that to Georgie. And did you have anything else you'd wanted to ask about in that vein or another vein? John, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, this uh, this is for Kurt. I'm I'm still trying to figure out how city objectives and policy might be changing with respect to its affordable housing program. And I I certainly understand the desirability of for for sale, middle, missing you know, properties. But has there been some formal decision to to focus on that, or is this strictly something that popped up and and a decision was made in this case that doesn't apply to future si- similar situations?
So, John, I'm not sure I'm following your question. Are you are you saying what has changed since nineteen ninety-nine or current policy or?
Well, all of the above. I mean, I mean, I'm trying to understand why something agreed to by the city and the applicant, although I understand there's been some changes of names in the applicant's file. What has changed that that makes the city find this proposal more acceptable than that which which was agreed on in nineteen ninety-nine?
Sure. So it's interesting, a couple of years ago, I was going back when we were doing the the IH update. And I was reading minutes from mid to late nineteen nineteen nineties from city council, and they were, they were actually complaining that they were getting too many for sale units, and they were trying to figure out how to get more affordable rental units. I think we would love to be having that conversation today. And the inclusionary housing was, I believe, is at twenty percent. And the what what's different, though, is that the sort of the gap between markets and affordable was was much narrower back then. The 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 amount of cash and lieu is substantially higher than it was back then, particularly as a percentage of the project. And it it's also much more expensive to develop the affordable housing, particularly for sale units than it was back in nineteen ninety-nine. And so this right now, we're getting almost exclusively rental units, either market rental units or affordable rental units in our community, and you will, you know, have seen that at on planning board. And so there there's certainly a shift within what we're hearing from council and the community for more for sale housing. So part of the the conversation with the developer was to try to come up with a solution that would would get us away from the rental and for sale and work towards for sale. I mean, if they if they do fourteen rental units, you know, we've got rental units that we're developing all over the place right now. It's not really, it's not really hitting an area that we're that we're focused on as much. So this seemed like a real opportunity to get some for sale units in that way. And and the 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 original annexation agreement I mean, gives them the opportunity to do rental units. So if we do nothing, they can go ahead and develop, you know, the fourteen units. We will struggle to figure out a way to monitor and implement those types of rental units within our affordable portfolio. And so you know, that that that's sort of the other outcome. I I don't I don't know if I answered your question or not, but.
Well, you, I mean, certainly you you have in the sense of providing the law project for the desirability of for sale units. I still don't understand why we don't want to make them deed restricted, though.
Um, because I I Um, because I, I don't think if we did make them, like if we had, if we said that you needed to do the same equivalent number. Of the restricted for sale units. He, he would probably just stick with his original. Uh, agreements, I imagine, but he can answer that for himself. And the, the, like I said, that gap has, has, has increased so much more. That it's, it's, it's not, it's, it's very dissimilar in community benefit to an eighty percent rental units.
Thank you. And just to kind of tag on to that, you mentioned the. The, the kind of rentals that could be built if we, if the amendment isn't done. Uh, and is there also a concern that this property will just kind of? Language and not, you know, and will miss out on development opportunity for long, long periods of time if, if we can't. Do something. I mean, is that one of the drivers as well, Kurt?
Um, it, it, it could be, um, and the, and the developer could, you know, address that as well. But. The, the annexation agreements that we've made over the last several years, that particularly for small properties like this. With a very high community, community benefit, we really haven't seen them develop. That's, that's actually on our. Sort of on our work plan over the next year or two to really look at these smaller annexations to see how. They can be better structured. For a, a, a reasonable community benefit that's actually gonna. Create developments.
Peter, did you have your hand up or?
I just had a quick one, just to help me reframe this, because we've gone from ninety nine to now, and then the delta, to put a fine point on it. And you said something along the lines, Kurt, of we're not trying to negotiate this as if it was. Asked to be annexed today, it's amended and annexation was originally, it was agreed to in ninety nine, if this was coming in today. Uh, and it was going to come through as rental. What would be the? The percentages that would be applied to make this affordable?
It would probably be in the range of about forty percent of the units. Uh, being affordable, maybe, maybe slightly higher. Um, they'd, they'd be affordable, probably at the sixty percent AMI range.
Thank you. So instead of eighty, it would be sixty, and that was the. Second to last, the last full sentence on page seven of nineteen of the packet that says. In addition, the cash and the contributions will be used to lever state and federal funds to create additional affordable housing elsewhere in the city with deeper levels of affordability well below eighty percent AMI. So that's one of our key net benefits of the new deal. Is that we will be able to deploy the capital to it at the affordability levels. Less than eighty, eighty to one hundred and twenty percent, which is perhaps an answer to John's question is what has changed? If I'm reading this right. Okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you for phrasing it that way, Peter.
And and just, I do, you know, I thought of one other thing, I mean, I see that there are other properties about this size along here. Are there other annexations that happened in under the same model that did pan out? Since nineteen ninety nine, generally, are you aware of any? Or is this kind of a one off completely?
I, I am not aware of those. Yeah, Toby Lane was developed by, by Thistle, you know, as a nonprofit, so they were. That, that was done a few years ago, but.
And that's close to that.
David, I could say they'd annexed with five other properties, I think, have similar. Agreements, then they're all still single family homes, as far as I can tell.
Thank you. Georgie.
Sloan, I have a question for you around. The, the, the maximum practical density and. How that's defined, kind of going back to Peter's. Question, but seeing if we could get a little bit better understanding, if we have to get it from the applicant too, but just curious what? How that, how is that defined?
Um, you know, there's districts where it's very easy to determine because it would be, you know, a minimum lot area. Anytime it's open space driven, it's really. Determined by the proposal and the site plan, so they would have to. Provide us with an analysis. Showing that. Based on open space requirement of that three thousand per dwelling unit, that this is the maximum permitted density and. Yeah, to be frank, we just, we don't have that information right now, but that's what we would base it on when they get to. You know, a planning process, a tour permit, and so they show us that they're developing at that maximum density.
So if they only got six townhouses on this site. Then we would get, if I'm reading it right, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars cash and low.
Yep.
That's it. Okay. I'd be curious, and and when we get to the applicant, I'd also be curious to understand what a, what, you know. What the anticipated sale price of a town home would be here. At what levels? I think that would be important for us to understand as the board.
Thanks, George. Okay, John, and then.
Hopefully. So just wondering. Is there any reason that staff didn't propose a condition? That would have had some required minimum number of. You know, residences or townhouses in this? It seems like it's been left up to the discretion of the owner. Completely and and whatever they decide, you know, with the twenty five thousand dollar contribution to. To affordable housing, that that's what'll happen. So that the city doesn't really have control over ensuring that that this is developed to its maximum potential. With respect to number of residences. Do I understand that correctly?
So we, we did have that conversation with the, with the developer. My, my understanding, and they can speak for themselves, that they, that they do want to get the maximum number of. Units on there as they can. And I think they, they've used even Toby Lane as sort of a. An idea of how they, they could do that. The, I, I, I think the challenge is when you put a particular number on it. And then you bring it forward and. You know, through all, through the regulatory process, you find out, well, that, that didn't quite work, you know, we've got. We have to take away one unit, or maybe we could have been, you know, got more units, but. You know, they may be open to a minimum number of units. Um, I think the challenge is until, you know, you do that site analysis, it's hard to. Define that.
Well, then you go through another discussion like we're having tonight when things change, I guess, but, yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, if that's it for the questions for staff, let's go, go ahead and move on to the applicant presentation. Um, generally, we, we do fifteen minute presentations, is that? And I guess, Michael Bosma, are you going to be kicking us off?
I think it's me, Don.
Don, Don, great, okay. Hi, Don, um, will, is fifteen minutes good or?
I, I think so, you know, and we, I apologize, we don't really have a, a presentation, but I've been trying to take good notes on all, all of your. Questions and feel free to ask some of the same questions again.
Right.
But let me, let me hit some highlights. So yes, our, I believe our interests are aligned, we want as many units as possible. Um, however, that's dictated by open space required. So per our calculations, you know, and we, we did spend. A hundred thousand dollars on an architect and we did design a fourteen unit project. You know, per our calculations, we can get about fourteen units attached. And maybe up to eight units. If they were detached, we've spent more time on the, like I said, spending the. Hundred thousand dollars on an architect and getting far down the road on the fourteen units. Model before we. Found out that it just didn't work economically. I hear all the. I hear the curiosity on how do you know it doesn't work economically? Unfortunately, I'm not, I didn't bring our numbers that we ran. Um, six months ago when we gave up on this fourteen unit idea. Um, but I can tell you. Unequivocally that it costs more to build. Um, and it too much to build and it would make absolutely no sense. For any type of owner. To develop it, it's just you would, you would be at a loss. Whether you, whether you rented the units or sold the units under the current agreement. So. We are. We are faced with something Kurt touched on, which is. You know, building. As, as a backup plan, which is not a primary plan. Uh, we didn't expect to be here at this point. A, a backup plan we had to put in place, which is just to build one. Large house. You know, remodel the existing house, add on to it, tear it down, rebuild it, whatever you want to call it. And so we, we haven't found a plan. Other than the one staff is presenting tonight with us. Um, other than feasible plan, other than one large. Seven thousand square foot house. And, you know, as we all know, even in, even at Fifty Fifth and Arapahoe. We could probably make it work, but that's, that's not what we want, that's not what we ever wanted to do. We want to fit. Um, fourteen attached units or maybe up to eight or so, again, depending on whatever the current code. Allows, we want to, we want to develop the maximum practical density. Um, and I think if we, and we're happy to do, we're happy to go further with density. But again, we would need, that would need. You know, we'd need to remove the restriction of open space requirement if we were going to go to a higher, higher density. Nonetheless, I think even fitting eight or fourteen units on this one acre site. They're not going to be big, they can't be big, you know, as you said, it's, as we all know, it's only an acre. So. You know, that's, that's where we get our affordability by the natural. And product, which is going to be smaller because we're trying to fit as many as we can on this small site. So please, please ask questions, I'm sure I forgot to answer. A lot of them.
That's fine, yeah, I know, you know, brother present, the PowerPoints aren't required for the presentation, thank you for that overview. Yeah, let's go ahead and open it up for questions and I'll have Georgia go first.
Thanks, um, a few quick questions. On the fourteen unit detached. And the eight unit, or I'm sorry, fourteen unit attached, eight unit detached, can you? Can you let us know sort of the, the general? Footprint, number of bedrooms, bathrooms, general square footage of either of those plans on average per unit? And then I'd be curious from your perspective, what you would. Uh, expect those to sell for in a for sale environment?
I don't have the fourteen unit plan in front of me. And maybe someone. On my team who's watching in the public can text me those. Square footages and I'll get that to you. We have. Been. But again, after that didn't pencil, and then after more discussions with staff. We have been more focused on probably the eight. Detached units. But we haven't developed a plan because, you know, we wanted to have meetings like this before we spent. You know, another hundred thousand and decided to go another direction. I did get that text, so ten three bedroom units. And four four bedroom. Townhomes.
And the tenor, like condos, maybe. Not stacked.
Inefficient, now I'm getting texts to answer your questions. All, all townhomes.
All townhomes.
Before, I'm sorry, that's, that's a, that's a fourteen unit attached. All townhomes, ten three bedroom, four four bedroom, under that scenario.
Correct.
So what's the, what would be the eight unit scenario then?
Eight units would be. Again, I'm not saying this is our preferred, I guess this is not our preferred, but it may be something we do for some other code reason. You know, would be detached homes, which would technically be. Con homes or town or condominiums, condominiums or townhomes, because, you know, we can't, we can't subdivide this.
And, and Don, what, oh, can I just?
I just want to follow my, my, my last question on that, which is the, the second part of my, my, my initial question, which was.
Right.
What would you anticipate these selling for? So the ten three bedrooms, the four four bedrooms? What do you think?
Um, I, I haven't, believe it or not, I haven't run those numbers.
But I'm sure. Believe it, I can't, I can't believe a developer wouldn't run the numbers on how they, what they would sell for sale units for and come to planning board.
I, I understand, they probably have a range.
Yeah, you gotta believe it. I, we've, we're pretty busy. We've got a lot of things going on and really we were at a point on this where. Let's just do one big house because the, the. We've got so much going on and that's easier. But again, we're, we're trying to get this, we're trying to get this done and do something that works for, for everybody.
And I'll just ask, while, while people are thinking, you've mentioned that under the current annexation agreement, you could. Expand the home to a very large home, but I, I, my understanding is that if the annex, annexation agreement reads that you. Any redevelopment has to conform to the, you know, to the maximum, you know, development. Potential with all those other affordability requirements, that that would not be allowed unless it was within. You know, a certain small percentage of a remodel, you would, maybe, and maybe that's more of a question for Kurt. You, you can't really.
The, the annexation agreement only applies to additional units. So we already have one, so it applies to all. As, as current, the, the, it applies to additional units.
Okay, so Kurt, there's no stop gaps for modifications to the existing unit, the existing dwelling unit, like. Uh, certainly with conformant, nonconformance, you're only allowed to go a certain percentage, but in this case, it, it. That isn't, doesn't apply.
I, I think Sloan would, or Charles would need to answer that.
Oh, thanks, yeah, maybe I should go to Sloan.
All right, meaning. I, I'll let, let me take a look at the agreement again, also the definition of redevelopment in the chat if that works.
It does require, you know, paying the affordable housing, the inclusionary housing fee. For that one large remodel or, you know, existing unit. For one unit. So you would, you would still have some IH requirement, just like you would on building one house anywhere.
Okay. That's interesting. Uh, that, that isn't what I understood, I understood that only applied if you added a dwelling unit, but maybe. Maybe I'm wrong. Okay, um, other questions while Sloan is looking at it, John?
Yeah, I, I'm interested in what Mr. Altman has, you, you heard my question asking about. Uh, conditions with a minimum number of additional units or. Or the expected number, and I'm, I have to, I'm still trying to get a feel for. From your comments, what, what is that number? That you would find acceptable if there, if there was a condition of a minimum number of additional units?
Oh, before I answer, let me answer that in a second, I got some, one of my staff corrected me. And you, you are right, there is, there is not an inclusionary housing requirement to replace the one existing house. John, the. What is acceptable, we want. We would be willing to do. As many units as we can fit, again, it would require. The current code. You know, it requires three thousand square foot feet of open space, so, you know, if we got, if we reduce that to say six hundred square feet. Of open space per unit and had a parking reduction. Then we may get up to, you know, twenty five units. And if that happened, then. I suppose we could look at a lot of things. But we, we have never expected. Um, that to happen, but. Again, as I've been talking, telling Kurt for six months, we want. We want density. All developers, most developers want density.
So. You know, I I understand that comment, but I'm still trying to understand why fourteen. You know, the density of fourteen units. You find infeasible, but six to eight units you do find feasible. So.
Well, there's there's the cost of the land that you have to make up for. So your cost per land per unit is. Less the more units you have. Your economy is a scale for building or less for more units. That you have. The more market rate units you have as a ratio to. Deed restricted units that you have. You know, the market rate rate units at some point start to pay for. The deed restricted units. And so that's. You know, you got to find that balance that where the teeter totter tips and. Now the developer has an economically viable project and the. City, you know. Gets affordable housing.
Right. I mean, but but if I understood correctly, you mentioned that. Fourteen units was not feasible, but six units was feasible.
Different product. Different different products and for sale. And you can't sell a fourteen unit attached condos when. Say sixty percent of the units are. Deed restricted and the other forty are you have problems with. Financing. It. There's a lot more complications behind that. Having it all in one building. Different different AMIs in one building. No deed restrictions in the same building. Renters versus homeowners, you know, when someone homeowner tries to get a mortgage. They can't get a mortgage if a certain amount of the units. Are rented and certain around for sale. So there's. We ran all those. Again, first we started with how many can we fit? What is the maximum practical density? We got to fourteen. And then we ran for sale for rent. You know, we just kept running it over and over and. You know, we got to. I guess in our world, we call it a, you know, like a. Two cap. So you just can't, you know, you can't borrow money at. Five percent and rented. You know, recover at two percent and then. You know, on top of that, the construction costs right now are. You all know they're they're they could be double what they were two years ago. And incomes are not double what they were two years ago. So. It's, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you.
The questions?
So did we? Would you like me to show that section of the annexation agreement?
Yeah, if if you could do that, I I understand then that, yeah, additional units, the only ones that are subject to the affordable housing, but. My thought is when I read the annexation agreement, both the old and the new. It would be a little bit beyond it to do a massive development on the existing two thousand foot house to create a. A large, large house because that's development, but maybe you can help us with that. Go ahead.
You want to share it?
It appeared briefly.
Yeah, it's interesting because. When it defines redevelopment, it does talk about. Adding to the existing structure or the value of that, but then if you go read on to paragraph four of the affordable housing. It says, no additional dwelling unit shall be approved unless the requirements are met. So the affordable housing only applies to new dwelling units.
But redevelopment would. So if the if they tried to exceed twenty five percent. Of the value of the existing structure by just adding on to it. That also would not be allowed. Is that correct? They couldn't.
They could. They would just they would be. The other sections of the agreement would apply. So in terms of these fees that would be due. That would still apply, but the actual affordable housing requirements only apply. To new dwelling.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Let's go on then to the public hearing. This is the time where the public can speak to us about this project. You'll have three minutes. Please do state your name and actually in our last planning board meeting. We agreed to also ask people besides their name and address. That prior to offering your testimony, please disclose any financial or business relationship with the applicant, the project or neighbors. This includes any paid compensation. And it would be helpful if speakers disclose any membership or affiliation that would affect their testimony. And this is not just related to this one. This is going forward for all projects. We're just trying to make sure that we know if you're speaking on behalf. Of an entity. So with that, go ahead and start raising your hands and we'll. Start the public hearing if you'd like to speak to this. I'm watching the attendee list, not seeing many hands raised yet. Give it a good. Thirty seconds or so. Oh, wait. Now suddenly I see my window is half off the screen. That's why I don't see the hands raised. Okay, good. So we have two people with hands raised so far. We'll start with Lynn Segal, followed by Lisa Spalding. Lynn, you should be able to unmute.
I think this project is far too premature. Anything about. A number of things that came to my mind. Well, I know Don Altman and Michael Bosma from fighting three eleven years ago. But I have no personal, you know. Except opposition to that development, which is. Super, super high end. And I still actually. Have no idea. So I tell all my friends, well, ten to fifty thousand bucks a month. You know, but it's rising every day. And you know, this is what's happening in this community. Yes, the construction costs have gone up. Yes, private equity firms are buying up. Every square inch of housing in the United States, you know, all over. Rental economy, you know. So it doesn't really matter rent or own anymore, does it? Like I said. Property taxes, the new rent. To not know what these units are going to go for is unacceptable. That's it. It was so unacceptable with three eleven. And I still don't know. And I'm going to tell all my friends as soon as I do know and talk to those people, you know, and we're number seven, Don Altman, number seven in the United States. You know, and here David Ensign is saying we need to think about equity in this community. You've got to be kidding. There's no equity here. You know, we for years we've wanted to index the AMI. You know, the AMI is. Crashing up, you know, with all the the commercial development in town, thousand dollars square foot for Apple and the other new ones coming here. And driving up. The 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 AMI, so. It's really, you know, you you might say it's it's affordable for someone to live here, but. You know. Is it affordable to live in Aspen? I can't go to Aspen. I couldn't pray to. So. It's it's just not feasible for you to even consider anything until you know what these units are going to go for. Rent or own. Because that's a dynamic situation in itself. And. It's just I say no when it comes to more density. It's what I said in my original statement. More density, all it means is New York City for Boulder. And why? This price is going to be the same. So why add all of this? Why add all this stress to the water and and there's no grocery store around here for all these people? You know, where's the local neighborhood? You know, I like smaller developments, but this is not the one.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, next we'll hear from Lisa Spalding. We say you should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Lisa Spalding, eleven thirty five J Street. I don't have any affiliations with anything. I was interested in this property because all I've heard about for the last year and and quite a bit at the city council retreat was. How do we do permanently affordable for missing middle? And this looks like the perfect example of how we would do it. I mean, the developer bought this property for a million dollars. I can't see how we're going to get. If you think that we're going to get market rate affordable. By letting him build the number of units he wants, it's not going to happen. I mean, you're going to have to. It's just like having affordable rent. You're going to have to put a cap on things. So I think it should be used for affordable housing. As it was, you know, as it was annexed for, but. It's not going to happen unless you make it happen. So thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, anyone else wish to speak to this item?
I'm not even anymore.
No.
All right, going going gone. Okay. Well, thank you to our two speakers tonight on this item. And I'll go ahead and Don, did you or any of the other folks in your team have any? Responses that you'd like to offer up for anything you heard during the public summit?
No, I I don't think we have a response. Go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. All right. So with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. And the next step will be to do board deliberation on this. I'm going to go ahead and. Let us do like a five minute bio break or stretch your legs break, whatever it happens to be, and we'll be back meet back here at twenty seven after the hour. Okay, I see people coming back together. Waiting for Georgie and Lisa and Lisa. Georgie, are you there and just not? Visibly out or? I'll make sure everybody's here when we start deliberating. So while we're waiting for Georgie to come back, I'll just. Say that. We have been. One key issue was identified from staff for this particular item. And that is is the proposal and proposed annexation agreement amendment consistent with the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Policies on Annexation. And the intent of the original annexation terms. So we can just kind of lump all of our comments into. Into that and open it up for anything that's on your mind with regards to this that you'd like to discuss. So with that, does anybody want to kick us off? Just saying what your thoughts are. Lisa, you want to start?
Yeah. When I look at the original terms of the annexation and what's been brought forward, I'm hard pressed to come up with a better solution than what's in front of us. I think the questions about it in ways, you know, proposals both from other members of planning board. And. Members of the public about how it might be better are fair points. But just when I look at what we have available, when I look at missing middle, when I look at what else would happen with this parcel. I'm hard pressed to come up with a better solution than what's in front of us. So I would say that, yes, I do think it's consistent with the original annexation plan. I appreciate that. I'm hard pressed to come up with a better solution than what's in front of us. So I would say that, yes, I do think it's consistent with the original annexation plan. I appreciate that. Staff put a time limit on it because I know that these small parcels often don't get developed quickly. So, you know, it kind of puts a. Clock ticking on there. And I'm curious to see if other members of the board, you know, have another solution that I haven't seen. But, you know, I have to say that I'd rather see some small homes, kind of like Toby's Lane or. Some townhomes or something similar versus another seven thousand square foot house up there. Which seem to be the two most likely outcomes. So, yeah, interested to see what other folks have to say.
Great, I'll just chime in on that seven thousand square foot house issue and then I'll call on you, John. And also maybe make some general comments. But, you know, when I read it and when I read the, under the annexation agreement as part of redevelopment. The redevelopment is defined as, and it includes issuance of a building permit for additional square footage or other improvements which exceed twenty-five percent. Of the assessor's actual value of the existing structure. So that is what's currently there and what I think is going to be in the new agreement because that's not going to be touched. So I assume that that's why we're not seeing a seven thousand square foot house go up on there because you can't build one under that, I don't think. Unless I'm wrong. And so you can certainly interrupt me if you think I'm wrong on that. But it seems to me if you're gonna stay within those parameters, you can. Put some square footage on, but. Not expand that much. And if, if that, if I'm wrong on that, we may want to consider how we could have a stopgap, but. It seems like the developer, the property owner isn't really interested in that. Otherwise, it would have happened already. Hella, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, that redevelopment definition, it's really put in there as a trigger for other requirements in the. Annexation agreement. It doesn't limit the square footage of the house that's already there. But there were some deferred fee and tax payments that come due when one of, when any of these things that are listed as being redevelopment happens.
So I'm wrong on that. So, so they could, could they demolish and rebuild one structure? And without?
Yes.
So I wonder if we might, do we have it in our purview to recommend that? We tighten that up? I don't know. It seems like, again, if that's something that could be happening now, it probably would have already happened. So. Not sure.
Yeah, it could be a question for the applicant, you know, what, what the applicant is willing to agree to because ultimately. For an amendment to occur, both parties have to agree to it.
Right.
I'm not a developer, but. Took some classes around real estate development and so on and have interacted with folks over time. And I will just tell you, it feels like the easy thing to do on this property would be. To retain part of the foundation, whatever is legally required, do whatever else. Build a luxury home and sell it at a premium, you know? And I think that's, that's where I'm coming from on saying, you know, if, if we want missing middle, if we want townhomes, if we want small homes rather than one big house. I think we need to look at this and. I cannot speak for the developer, but what I believe I heard when, when we were hearing from, from the developer was. That they were trying to find a way to keep to the terms of the original annexation agreement, and this is what they and staff came up with. There may be something better. I don't know what it is. You know, but, but I just want us to be very honest with ourselves about. What is likely to occur? On that parcel, at least financially, what would make sense to develop if we choose not to move forward with this.
That's right. Thank you for that, Lisa. Yeah, and I just wanted to understand whether that really was a possibility, and it sounds like it is. So thank you for that. I'll go ahead and defer other comments because I know that, John, you wanted to go next.
Yeah, thank you. I have to say that. I'm very sympathetic with, to what the city staff is seeking to accomplish with this. And I perceive it generally in the same way as Lisa, that. If, if this doesn't. Move ahead in some way, that it's entirely possible that some. Single-family palace will wind up being built there. At the same time, I, I think that there are so many. Aspects of this that are unclear to me, that I, I believe that it's premature to recommend moving ahead with this as written. I think if we were to. Add some conditions regarding. You know, a minimum number of units that would be built here. And other aspects of that nature. I, I would be willing to move ahead, but. The way it is now, it is left so vague and so much is at the discretion of the. Of the owner of this land with respect to its ultimate fate that. That I. I would have trouble supporting it as written.
Okay, Peter?
I understand the. Lack of comfort with. The lack of details that John has, but I, I track pretty closely with Lisa's comments around what we have, what we could get. And what's been worked out and. It's, you know, coming from our position, having not been in these discussions and negotiations, but hearing what I heard tonight and what I've read, I feel that. The way it was called out in. You know, paragraph four. That. Property shall be developed to maximum practical density. The way the cash and lue has a, has a fuse on it. And the for sale aspect of it, I think it's, it's a net benefit that I'm comfortable with, and I agree with it. And. You know, these are all these little singles and doubles or skirmishes or whatever metaphor you want to use to. To achieve our housing goals, they'll come at us in odd ways, and I'll take this one. Even though I really, I do agree with, with Georgie and John from the beginning of. Detail is better, and I do give it to the applicant for giving it a shot on the fly there with us of running some numbers, as it were. Hopefully, the message will go out that this board is open to that kind of mathematics earlier and more fully.
Georgie?
So. I guess where I come from is kind of in between what everyone else has said, which is. I don't know whether or not this meets near the intention of the, what was originally put in place in this annexation. I like the idea of the original annexation around making this permanently affordable housing, addressing some missing middle on the site directly. Feels like that may or may not happen depending on how this rounds out. And the, the biggest problem I have is. Lack of information and. I, I am conceptually with the proper information and completely on board with this proposal. But, you know, the applicant saying something like. They didn't, they're, they're too busy to run the numbers on what a for sale unit is and then, and then two comments later say they ran. All these different models at two caps and three caps, whatever else. I mean. I've done this for a living for twenty years, and I guarantee you, any meeting I've come into with like this, I've known all my numbers. And I don't feel like. There's enough transparency for us to make a good determination. And this is, is a negotiation around these things. I'm not opposed to this agreement, but I think it would be. Terribly unfortunate for us as a board. To go ahead and accept this without more detail behind it. Because I don't think anyone on this board can say they have a clear understanding of the economics behind these developments, behind. The previous annexation agreement. A clear enough understanding to know that we're getting the best opportunity we can as a city. And on the flip side, right, I get exactly what Lisa's saying around. You know, the potential for this just to become a bigger house. And. My guess is, is that the developer wouldn't be here if there wasn't enough economic juice to make something like this work versus a big house. And so all I'm asking for before rubber stamping this is for more detail behind it. So we're educated as a board going forward. For not only this project, for other projects. But I think if we, if we just acquiesce without any more detail. We're not doing good service to the community because we, no one here has a good understanding of the economics of a project like this.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and weigh in. So, yeah, I hear, you know, I certainly am sympathetic to all the. All the comments that have been made, and I think we're all kind of falling into different, different places on a scale. I guess I tend to. Look back and realize that, you know, there are many times where. I, you know, as a planning board member, I've been asked to make decisions where I haven't been able to see. All the numbers and certainly with by right, without an annexation agreement. Oftentimes, we don't even see anything because properties are bought and they're already in the city. And then they just navigate within. Whatever that zone allows. And so there we don't have any control. So the idea that we can control everything is actually kind of unique to annexation agreements because we actually can. Negotiate more, a lot more. So that's interesting. So the question is, well, you know, am I, would I, I mean, yeah, I think I agree with you, Georgie. I would like to see numbers. It would be nice to know. I don't know. That. How much. That might drive my decision one way or the other. My assumption is if you were talking about fourteen units of ten, three bedrooms, four, four bedrooms. Townhouses, I can kind of imagine what those are gonna go for, you know? Somewhere in the half million dollar range in Boulder, I don't know. So there, you know, there, there, you know, we have an expensive real estate market. So. Yeah, I mean, I, I guess my question is, you know, I guess I, I feel like I, I would hate to see us. After the, after the property owner has worked with the city and they've tried to come up with something that would create a path for. You know, at least dwelling units that, you know, that are not super high end. If we, if we were to. Complicate it so much that outcomes really got bad because they, they kind of ratcheted into the worst possible scenario. I would hate for that to happen. So it'd be nice to see if the board feels like they're, you know, if you have ideas for a couple of recommendations, we could add on or a condition we could talk to the applicant about. That would be good. I mean, this is gonna go to council and they're gonna have to make the final decision. We're the recommending body. So. So I'd be interested in, in what, if there are things that we might want to discuss that might make you feel more comfortable at this point. I'm not sure. About just bouncing it back and asking for, for the applicant to come back with more, more numbers, but certainly we can talk about all these possibilities. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, you know. We seem to only be talking about specific numbers when it comes to like the twenty-five thousand cash and lue per unit. I don't know where that number comes from. Why not thirty? Why not fifteen? Why not forty-five? I mean. What's the basis? I, I don't, you know, that's the number that we're going off of, but no one's telling us, you know, what the economics are behind this project. How do we know that that's the right number?
So, does anyone want to weigh in on that? We could ask Kurt to chime in a little bit more on that because I, I know, Kurt, you mentioned that. In the original nineteen ninety-nine agreement. It was based on, there was no affordable housing program like we have today with inclusionary housing fees. So you were looking for a kind of a path towards a fair kind of middle ground or, but go ahead and if you could address that for us.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I guess it's a good question. So I asked the Michelle Allen, who oversees our IH program, to come up with a number that she thought would be equivalent to, to that. Approach. That's in the current annexation agreement as sort of an equivalent. I, I don't know what those. I don't know the backup to that, that calculation, though.
But if this were. Annexed in, under, today, under our current inclusionary housing units of this type would be. Twenty-five percent, which would be somewhere in the, maybe the fifty thousand range or something, or what would, what would be? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be closer to seventy in our. Our IH is certainly, you know, that much higher than it was in, at that point, and maybe even more so.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I, I just. Like to embroider a little bit on, on some thoughts I had and. Response to your comments mainly, and that is that. We don't really know. You mentioned that there might be fourteen units, but I. My understanding from when we talked to the applicant was that it was more likely to have six or seven units. So I think that that, that sort of. Lack of knowledge about what we're actually agreeing to is, is a real concern and. That's why I, I'm wondering if there's some way we can add specific conditions that would make it clear what we're actually agreeing to. And I'd be interested in, in my colleagues' thoughts on that.
So, John, one clarification, at least the way I understand it, that the applicant can maybe answer on their own. The, the original proposal that they brought for was for fourteen rental units, and I think the, the lower number of units was to have smaller detached type cottages. I understood it to be eight or nine units, but I don't know if the applicant wants to speak to that.
Thanks. And, yeah, I'll go ahead and call on the applicant. And could I also mention that actually what I kind of heard you say, Don, was I felt you had. Mentioned that you had been focusing on fourteen attached, so that's what you had paid the architects to look at. So. I actually heard the opposite. I heard that the fourteen attached was something that you were kind of focused on, but was that only in the rental? Model?
Yeah, yeah. So the plant, the plan that we actually went through, architecture and part of the building permit process and everything, all that. Was fourteen rental units. The, again, there's different product types and we really don't know which one. There's a lot more that goes into this, right? Fire truck turnaround. Open space requirement. There's all, there are all kinds of. Different criteria that guys like David Thompson will throw at us that we can't predict, which is why it's hard for us to tell you exactly how many units. We can get. And so, but we want as many. Whether it's, we don't know which it is yet, whether it's the fourteen-unit style apartment building, whether it's the eight or nine detached. Little houses that we think would, could work, or whether it's a tat, or whether it's ten to twelve. Attached, you know, townhome row style. We haven't run all those scenarios yet. But we want. The maximum density. We just can't predict everything that comes up in the building permit process. And so that's why it's hard to, hard to define all that. You know, we're happy to. You know, we think to get more density, we would need. Reduction in open space requirement and parking. And so if we added that on to a requirement tonight, you know, I'm curious what council would think of that. Would that open up a can of worms? There, a larger discussion there, or do we work between then, between now and then for that, for that density? But again, we all want the same thing. We haven't done a single, we didn't plan on doing a single-family house because we, we don't want to, not because it's not feasible. But it's, it's, I get the frustration on, on more specifics. It's just. There's a lot that goes into it. Once you get into the building permit process. That we can't predict.
Okay, does anybody want to? Ask maybe a little more specifically on that? I mean, is there a number that you would feel comfortable with being like at least? X units that you'd be comfortable with shooting for, at least eight units? For example, since that's the lowest number we've kind of talked about, or is that uncomfortable for you because of the uncertainties?
I mean, I would. Part of me wants to say at least twenty units or ten, however many you want. But what, what happens if there's a reason we can't? Do what all of us here say we can do, right? When we get into the building permit process and. When we get into the building permit process and for some reason that I'm not technical enough to understand, we can't do, and then we're back to, not because we want to be, but then we're back to one house, one single family house. And so I don't think that's going to happen. I'm just trying to avoid something that none of us, none of us can predict. But I'm, I'm happy to think of additional language to, to get more density, um, you know, between now and, you know, if, if this moves forward between now and city council.
Is there a way we can add that into language around our motion with our suggestion to council and channeling my inner Sarah Silver here in her absence of how we could, uh, bolt that on, David, uh, to address John's concerns?
We can always, we can always try to punt, uh, punt it to council.
Oh, no, we are punting it anyway, so.
Well, but yeah, but when we, when we, uh, when we kind of, uh, put the, well, I mean, it, it might be a little uncomfortable to ask council to uh, come up with a number if we can't. I, I don't know. I, maybe we could, we could consider something like that. I just say, I mean, the, the, the new agreement does say shall be developed at the maximum practical density. So that's something that when they come to city staff with the proposal for permitting, uh, that there will be a, a dialogue gone, well, does this really meet that criteria, right? So, um,
Yeah, I agree. Those, those words weren't, um, those, those words were arrived at after much consideration, I'm sure by everyone that went in, all the attorneys that went into drafting this. So it, it, John, it does mean that it is to be develop, developed at the maximum practical density. I don't know what other words we could add that.
Well, I don't know. I mean, we, tonight we saw that staff, neither staff nor applicant had any numbers at all to, to work with. So I, I just wonder if this is premature, when we have no idea really, even given that language, what we're like, what is likely to happen there?
It feels like we have a range, and maybe this is a question for staff. I mean, this would need to come back. I, I, am I right or am I wrong? This would be, would this be something that would then be by right? Is this something that planning board could potentially call up? Whether it be a concept review, you know, like where, where would we be at if we were to say, sure, go ahead, see if you can do it in that window? Um, you know, is it something we could bring back up in front of us, or could we add that as a condition if the concern is that we want oversight later?
Uh, I, I, I guess we can ask, uh, Sloan, if, uh, generally this is by right, if, if it's, if it conforms to the annexation agreement and zoning, correct?
Right. So based on the size of the site and the zoning, wouldn't be going through a site review. It would be a by right project. Um, so I guess two things here in terms of the, the density that would be done through the, the permit review or a technical document review. But in that case, I still wouldn't be looking at any numbers necessarily.
So I sort of hate to put this potentially in the applicant, but as we're approving an annexation, do we have the legal authority as a board to potentially say, we want to look at it again, or is that something that we do not have the power to add?
Well, it sounds like a question for Helen.
Helen, Helen, calling Helen.
Yeah, I think that's something that could be incorporated into an annexation agreement.
So in that case, and I'd be interested to hear from both John and Georgie, would adding something like that on there whereby the planning board would get the chance to look at this again? We don't know exactly which planning board or when, would that assuage some of your concerns? You'd have the chance to, or so, or some planning board would have the opportunity, the public would have the opportunity, you know, to, to weigh in on what was happening, we'd get some more specific numbers, we could give maybe the developers the, what they need to decide if they're even going to try to do it or not within the timeframe they'd be granted.
Well, I, 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 I think taking a look at it is inadequate. It would, the degree to which planning board would have any ability to control what actually happens there is what would be important. Uh, so these negotiations normally take place in connection with annexation. Uh, so this is the time when we should be doing it, and if we're not prepared to do it, maybe we should suggest that it be, uh, delayed until we obtain the information we feel we need.
I, I tend to agree with John. I, I think this is the point in time where there is an opportunity for negotiation. And after the fact, it's just going to be after the fact. And it might as well just not be viewed by planning for, because I don't think it'll make a difference then, whenever that is. Uh, I, I, I go back to even our own, uh, the city's numbers that we've assigned to this. And why twenty-five thousand dollars per unit is the right number? It just, it just feels like stuff is being pulled out of the hat to me, um, without getting more information. And so I, I can in good conscience, um, I mean, we can wait for a vote, but that, that, that's going to be my position. I, and I'm not opposed, you know, the shame is, I'm not opposed to any of this. But I think as, as a planning board member, I'm being made to, to, to have a decision on something where we have completely inadequate information.
Well, um, yeah, and I, and I know that I've seen annexations where we've had, uh, detailed site review plans accompanying them. And I've seen other annexations where, uh, all we know, uh, on the day that, uh, even the annexation takes place is what the zoning is going to be. And we really don't know what the outcomes are going to be. I kind of, is a big range. So, um, so I don't, I don't know if I feel so strongly that I need to know every, you know, CSI review level, uh, plan, uh, for this. But, uh, but I don't, yeah, I, and I don't know if that's what you're asking for really, uh, uh.
I, I don't think that's what I'm asking for. I'm asking for just basic information. What does the developer think? What, what do they, what do they really think they're going to build here? What do they think these things are going to sell for? Is it going to really meet our goals? And are we doing the right thing on the affordable housing cash and loop? Is twenty-five thousand dollars the right number? No one can, no one here has given us any information on that.
Lisa, did you have a comment?
Yeah, yeah, I, I had a couple of things that, I think Georgie's point is, is excellent and a solid point. I wish we had more specific information. Um, I don't know if we want to ask the applicant this, but something that I'd be curious about, and I wonder if, you know, the chair or anyone else is interested is, you know, I'm sure they don't want to send a bunch of many developing plans or something, but, but I think that what we have said or what, what I've heard, I think, and don't let me put words in your mouth, um, Georgie or, or John, but what I think I've heard is that there isn't necessarily direct opposition to this plan. Um, but that rather there is a desire for more specific information before approving the annexation. Um, which I'm sure is not as nice of a, you know, green light as, um, you know, the, the developer might wish for, but, but it is, is something. I mean, you're, you're hearing from this board that we, we like the concept overall. It's just not as defined as a couple of our members want. Um, so I think our, our options to move forward would either be potentially by asking the developer to say, hey, you know, are you in a position to bring something a little more baked forward or more concepty forward? Um, and, and, you know, would you do that now that you've heard that we, oh, I think what I'm hearing from folks is that they're interested in this. Um, and or doing an up or down vote. Um, which, you know, I feel is a little bit uncomfortable, but I think either one of those would be reasonable steps to take now, because I, I think everyone's voice, where they're coming from, I, I think I understand where everybody's at. Um, so I think we, we should either see about asking them to come back or take an up or down vote.
And Helen, we're, we're asked to make, take action on this item. Uh, are we, is it, you know, if we, if the applicant is willing to reschedule a, some, a, a, a hearing where we can get more information from that applicant? Is that considered an appropriate action for us to take on, um, an annexation question like this?
I guess I would say that generally the requirement to move forward is to, to come in front of the planning board. And you should try to make a motion that recommends something. And I think the motion could be, I, I, I think you can also ask the applicant about his thoughts to come back. Um, but, but they may not support that and, and may not want to move forward, you know, it, it ultimately comes to me. It's a little bit different than an annexation. It's an annexation agreement amendment. So the property is already in the city. And there are current development options under the existing annexation agreement. So that's just something to keep in mind as you decide how you want to move forward. Just listening to you, I was wondering if maybe you could, um, you would want to make a motion that expresses that you, that you support the concept, that you wished you had more detailed numbers and information that substantiates um, that, that it's not feasible to develop under the current annexation agreement. And that a better outcome would be the proposed amendment. And, and, and to recommend that that be shown, that council asked that that be shown to council before they take action.
Yeah, yeah, that, um, that, that is certainly something we could, we could try to put together so that, uh, you know, of course, um, then council sees that there was a lot of concern on the part of the planning board. And when they look at that, uh, and if, uh, so I guess, um, yeah, I mean, it, and that makes sense, Helen, that, um, we can, Don, if you're, you, you have heard that there's at least two, we, we would need four votes to send this on to planning board with a strong recommendation. And I don't think we're going to get that from a straw poll that we've, uh, just seen. Um, yeah, uh, unless I hear from Georgie and John that you would, could find, uh, wording on, on this that would send a, a pretty strong recommendation. Otherwise, we'll be working on, uh, the kind of, uh, of a message to council that Helen is talking about, where we try to get the concerns out. And then council would have to decide what to do with that. So, Don, I, I don't know if that's, if you're comfortable with us going forward, that will, we would, uh, we could, uh, do that. And then, uh, or you could always, uh, I suppose, say, hey, let's reschedule uh, another planning board, uh, thing and try to, try to satisfy, uh, the requests that, that Georgie and John have, have voiced. So, um, yeah, and, uh, Lisa, did you want to add on before we asked on to react to that?
No, ju- just I appreciate that last thing you just said, David. I'm blanking on which item it was and which meeting it was. But I, I remember that there was, um, maybe it was the bedrooms of the dining room, whatever thing. Um, but, but that we have in, in the past had, um, applicants, and I'm not saying that you should or shouldn't do this. It's completely up to the applicant. Um, but, but we've heard, heard enough turmoil in planning board. We're also hearing enough support for a different plan that, that the applicant actually chose to withdraw and then return. Um, so I'm not saying you should or shouldn't do that. But if I remember correctly, that is another option, um, besides our, our moving forward. So I just wanted to make sure that, that the applicant was aware of that.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to kind of, I think, uh, say is that, yeah, Don, um, you could certainly propose, I suppose. And then we could ask staff, you know, what the implications and timeframes would be, um, if you wanted to try to take another pass at planning board. Otherwise, what we would probably do is craft, uh, a, a motion that, uh, uh, with a recommendation that voices the concerns of the, of the board. And Don, did you want to speak to that?
Okay, um, so, you know, we've vown this for two years. Um, the first year spent, as it was vacant, spent a hundred thousand dollars to design a fourteen unit project that didn't work. The second year, um, I worked hard with Kurt's and I really believe that myself and staff came up with a much better scenario for the city than the existing, um, annexation agreement. Um, I'm just not up for lengthening the process. Um, and so, and I, I hope you can understand that. Um, I would, I would ask for, I don't quite understand how this process works exactly. So if I sound funny, that's why. Um, I would ask for a recommendation that something along the lines of, you know, you support the changes, but want to add, you know, want council to look into and somehow enforce, um, and, you know, and concrete in the fact that there should be and can be higher density. Cause that, that seemed to be a, be a concern. Um, I would, I would hope that there wasn't a bunch of, you know, a lot of other negative um, comments that went with any type of recommendation, obviously.
Okay. Well, thank you for that input. Let's, um, see what we can put together here. Um, and I, I don't know if, uh, John or Georgie, you have, um, maybe any thoughts about things, uh, you might want to see. But we could certainly start, uh, to, uh, craft something. Peter, and then Georgie.
Thanks, everyone, for this. It's nice. It reminds me of kind of my first year on planning board, where it's really nice that we're trying to get to is the maximum amount of housing for our community on this site in a way that's enforceable and, and working with what we have in front of us, which is an ideal. So what we want is as many units as possible for sale that are going to be attainable for folks. And if you look at what's on the market right now for sale, it's, it's obvious there's almost nothing, and that's going to continue for a while. So adding more attainable units that are not luxury houses is, is good. The cash and low amount, I'm with Georgie, I don't know where it came from, but again, and echoing David here, I, I think that's part of the, part of the terrain here, is that we're not going to know, uh, all of that. I've been banging the table for years about wanting to see performance from developers so we could actually make informed decisions. Maybe I'm just jaded now at the point where I think, okay, the deal's been cut. I can't triple guess it. It sounds, I don't know. I mean, we could go on forever. It's, you know, becomes forever. So, I, I'm, I would, I'm okay adding some of that language that says we want the maximum density. We heard the applicant multiple times try to invite us into, you know, waving open space requirements so that they could get, get more. Um, we're not doing that. I don't think they want to necessarily go there, but something that underscores our desire for more units, uh, which by the, but, you know, there'll be, you, you, just like we talked about on other developments, you can have highly, you can have luxury small, uh, units, but it's, we're going to assume that's not what we're going to get here. We're going to get attainable units as many as possible, whatever language we need to add. I'm comfortable adding that in. And, uh, that's my position.
So oftentimes, um, oh, Georgie, you wanted to speak on this, right?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, at least from my perspective, I'm, I'm not over here advocating for maximal density without other considerations, right? I mean, I think what's attractive to what the developer has brought forward is the idea of for sale, missing middle housing. And I don't know that for sale, missing middle housing and maximum density are identical, right? So I, I want to be cautious on how we word something around that. Because I think that's what we're trying to achieve here in addition to the cash and blue. Um, I'd also like to see the city staff provide us some analysis on this cash and loot. And they're going to have to dig into a little bit of performance to understand. Because I don't think anyone here is saying, hey, the developer should absolutely make money on this project. But our job is to make sure the best deal is struck for the citizens of Boulder and long-term, um, planning. And I think that comes down to the missing metal housing on site that's for sale. But I also think that comes down to really understanding why, why this cash and loop. And if it shouldn't be something different, because this project, even though it's a small project, this, whatever we agree to here is going to resurface itself again and again and again on these small projects. And at some point, we need the information, because otherwise we're going to be sitting here. You know, I'm going to be Peter in four years, sitting there saying, ah, I guess I'm just jaded because I don't have the information. I've been banging my head for five years. And I appreciate that. And I, I think, you know, that's, that's what scares me is that it's exactly that, you know? Um, except that won't be as good looking. But besides that, you know, um, I'm, I'm concerned about that. So that, that would be my, that would be, that would be my recommendation is, I, I would like to see if we're going to put recommendation language in here is to make sure the site address is missing middle, middle housing. Um, we don't use words like maximum density, but we, we use. I don't know what it might be, and then we also ask. Um, staff to um, staff and the developer to go back and look at this cash and loot fee and make sure it's 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 the right amount and that there's backup and we understand it and the community understands it.
All right, so it sounds like we're probably um, ready to start um, working on some language and. A a lot of times I I actually displayed something, can people see what I'm displaying here? This is the recommended motion, um, since Cindy's not on, Cindy oftentimes does this, I don't know, Amanda, if you've ever done this, but I I don't mind his chair. Typing things this time, if that's okay with people, uh, they're not, uh, and then I can uh. Uh, follow you, you know, you follow you as you throw things out and then we can have some some uh. Uh, text for a motion, um, I think the L U R needs to be in here, I cut and pasted this from the packet, but I. Uh, it doesn't have the L R U on it, so. Um. I will put that in, but uh, so what 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 do we think about um, the language then, uh? Um. Something like, um. The uh, though, um, though the uh. Uh, board, the board members, uh. Me, um, uh, all, all board members saw many. Great, uh, or many good aspects to the uh, annexation agreement and its intent. Uh, the board did not have a majority to uh, have a full recommendation as written for the following reasons. Something like that. And then we can start to craft that.
Yeah, I I think that's fine, I was just, I I just, something about the board did not have. Maybe did not have support for unanimous recommendation or something like that. Because we probably have a three two right now, and I'm not suggesting we take a three two, I'm just saying.
We we need four.
Yeah.
Oh, we need four.
For the, I don't think we are recommending, given the distribution of. Votes here.
We 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 didn't take a formal straw poll, but um, my understanding, Georgie and John, is you would not vote yes on on a recommendation. Is that correct? So that's why we're working on a, on a motion to uh, because we would, we would need four, four votes to send a recommendation to council.
That's correct for me.
And Georgie, is that correct for you as well?
Yes, as currently written, uh, again, I just don't have enough information.
Hmm, so now we're trying to craft a um, a a. Motion that can get four votes, that can uh, uh, tell council the reasons why we weren't able to send a. Uh, uh. Thing, you know, a a clean recommendation, um, and then they can look at that and decide. Uh, if they want to ask the staff for more or the applicant for more or whatever. Uh, is that correct, uh, Peter?
Yeah, um. Let's have, uh, we. We we just heard George.
Yeah.
What he would add to that. If we can, if he can help us reduce that.
Should we start with the bullet list?
Yeah, some bullet lists, and then we'll. Can help us, worse method, if we can get John and Georgie's points that it, what what needs being here for them to say hi? And then see if the rest of us can agree, and then we've got. A motion and we're good.
Great, okay, so I heard that um, uncertainty. As to the number of units that would be. Ev- eventually be. Be built. Uh, dwelling units. Is that, is that a grid category?
We could say answer, number and type.
Hmm. Um. Uh, I'm sorry, again, uncertainty. As to. The uh. Cash. In. Lou. Amounts of. Twenty-five thousand per. What new dwelling unit?
Yeah, I I. Might write it a little bit differently, because what what I would like to understand. Is, are we maximizing the cash and loo? Amount at twenty-five thousand per new dwelling unit? Because as Kurt said, that would probably look like more like seventy thousand dollars, I I think, I I I heard that right, unless someone correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, if it were, if it were under the current uh, affordable housing. Program, right?
Mm-hmm. So. Um. I think, you know, the the big question is. The cash and loop proposed is about one-third of what it would be. And. Are we maximizing that? On behalf of the city? Right?
That, yeah. It's a nice way of saying. Go back and get it. Go drive a better deal.
Yeah, I mean, and that is, I I mean, it's, it's, there are negotiations that happen before it gets to us, but if the planning board is not convinced. That uh, the negotiations resulted in the proper amount, then we can certainly say that.
George's defense, it's is what went, is can we get a little more insight into what went into it? So it's not just blind faith, which sometimes we have to do, but I I appreciate his point, which. This is a chance to say a little more, a little more data on how we probably got to that. If there hadn't, if there been such a. Scarcity of data elsewhere. This wouldn't have also come up, but I think the sum total and having heard George fairly clearly that it's data. Said multiple times, he's not against this, it's that he doesn't really has enough data to really make that decision and how we convey that in this, which is, yes, we're all in support of this. Uh, however, we feel there should be more data, and that's something that council could say, oh yeah, oh yeah, good point, yeah, more data. Let's, let's get into that, thanks for surfacing that for us.
Does this uh, capture that?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would, I I I would prefer is so that they understand. Can clearly and concisely, since this is approximately one-third. Um, the amount that would be paid under today's today's inclusionary housing program. Cause that will give them a clear insight into. You know, sort of what what what's being proposed versus what would be proposed today without any of this information.
Yeah, I um, I I wonder uh, about that because uh, we don't really know. What the, because we don't know what the uh, these units are gonna sell for, so if the uh. The. I I don't know, I I think significantly less is just.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I, but it, but it is, I mean, we're we're saying what a sub, what a subset of the board feels, so it doesn't have to reflect every single one of our opinions, so.
Um, is is it true that we're starting from zero as they had agreed to, and now we're adding. Something as part of the basket of negotiated items, and so it's, it's not that they're getting away with. Uh. Only having to pay a third, it's also the city's getting a third where there was zero. Taken in conjunction with all the other items that are on the table.
Well, yeah, I mean, this was all affordable housing, onsite affordable housing as part of that original annexation, so I don't know how you quantify, it's not zero. What the original annexation was, I I think that's one of the issues, right, is how do you quantify?
That's a good point, yeah, it wasn't zero, it's the cash, we've now have a number that we use for cash and loot that was different. That exists now, so yeah, it's.
I mean, you know, it really depends on whether you feel that um, a negotiation that took a nineteen ninety-nine. Agreement and settled on this figure as an intra, as a sort of a, a of a halfway uh, amount was resulted in a good number. And uh, if if people aren't happy with that and don't want to vote no for that, which is what I'm hearing, then we can put that down here, and that's what we've got. Uh, so I don't know if we have to try to sell it. But um, anyway, uh, what were the other ones, are there any others? Um. These were the two that I was hearing.
The only one that I would add, and again, this is, this is kind of. This goes to more sort of what the composition of this site is going to be, but. Um, I would hope that the the housing developed here. You know. Attacks the missing though, right? I think that's.
Yeah. Uh, okay, a desire for there to be more predictable. Outcomes to address holders' missing middle goals, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. So these are the three major areas that are causing us not to get uh, a uh, uh, four votes on on this. Um, so now if we could word the the wording so that maybe we can get a unanimous vote to communicate this. Uh, because uh, you know, um, I think there are some of us in the room who. Might have been willing to, you know, probably would have been willing to to. To send this on to council, but um, so we don't want to. We do want to say that, you know, it's it's just some, it, how we want to position it properly. So uh, planning. Board. Uh. Members. While largely. Supportive. Of the. Outcomes. Uh. Uh. In in this, in uh. Now I can put in the L U R, which is missing. L U R. Two oh two one, and Hella, you um, feel free to, I can send this over for more word sniffing. I'm just trying to get down what. Generally.
Um, uh. Recommend, instead of did not have, I would say, well, up to support of the outcomes. Add the following to its recommendation. Of approval.
Um, let's see, um. Did not have, uh, I was just gonna say did not have a majority opinion to recommend to city council approval for the following reasons. Does that make, is that a a way to word it, or is there a better way?
I think that's appropriate.
I don't think this needs to be capitalized. You do. The following. Concerns. With its consistency with the overall goals and policies of blah, 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 blah. Since we're basing our uh, our comments on, okay, so um. Okay, so Hella, feel free to weigh in, um. With any wording you see that might be problematic or that you would, you would change, but. Uh, well, I'm trying to capture what the thoughts are, planning board members, while largely supportive of the outcomes in L U R twenty twenty-one dash zero 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 four five annexation agreement amendment. Did not have a majority to recommend to city. Council, uh, recommend city council approval.
Frankly, David, I would say it does not recommend. City council approval.
I would not vote for that.
Yeah, John, it's three two, you can't just. Take up, you can't flip it the other way around.
I don't, I don't want.
Prove it, you don't.
I mean, if 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 you can get four four votes on that, we could word it that way, but um, I'm not going to.
No, I mean, it's. I'm not clear.
Glasses half full, not half empty.
Word. Right, right now, the motion is not really, it's not really drafted as a motion, I guess. Um. If if that's where it lands and. Uh, to me, it it seems like you could draft a motion that states we recommend approve, we recommend you approve this provided the following happens. Or you could. Make a motion that states we recommend against approving it unless the following also happens, what whatever that is, whether you think that can happen. Before council sees it, or if that should come back to the planning board. Um. Or you could just, uh. And and if you don't get four people to vote on either of those types of motions. Then I would suggest that. Maybe the three make a motion to approve, and then you can record how that motion failed. And and then maybe summarize the rationale behind that and the thoughts of the board. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think that that does make sense, um. So, um. You go ahead, John, uh, I'll, I'll, um, it sounds like you want to make the motion of the board recom, uh, uh. The board not, of the non-recommendation motion, and we'll see if we can get four votes for that, so. Uh. Go ahead and word that for me, and I'll type it into here.
I'm, I'm trying to figure that out, I. I would have thought that what you have is okay, it's just that the, it requires a majority. Uh, to make a recommendation. And. Uh, to either to approve or to deny. And uh. Well, I don't know, perhaps the way you have it is is appropriate, but uh. Uh, we don't have a majority to approve.
Are there any?
Would have a. Pardon? How?
Sorry, sorry, John, I I just wanted to ask um, for uh, Georgie and and John, sorry, I don't want to interrupt you, Georgie, um. Whether this language or some other language would be sufficient um, for you to consider voting. To approve, or even with this language, if you feel that you could not vote to approve. Um, you know, just so we get a sense of which direction we're going.
Uh, well. I guess from my perspective, I would not, if you're asking if I would approve the motion as is. Then no. Um. The the current motion that's on, that's that's been put forward to us, not not this one, but the the original one. Right, and then if we were to make an a emotion where, um.
How, I I have an idea.
Yeah.
Let me do this, um, because I think Hella and uh. Uh, John both uh, really made me aha on something. So let's do, let's put this text back here and uh. And say, um. Uh. Plan a motion to recommend. To city council approval of the annexation agreement, whatever, uh. Um. Uh, with, with. The condition. That the following. Be addressed. Before approval, uh, before. Fine, uh, before, uh. Final approval. And then have the two items, how does that sound, because we're, we're saying that if these things are uh. Dealt with. That we'd be okay with it, and that way we can. And I'll put the L R U in there. Let's see how this. The time.
I would, I would hope that something like this would satisfy the two members who could not vote for it. Because it's exactly what they said they wanted to have addressed.
It seems, it seems a little bit uh, clearer, um, and thank you, Hella, I always kind of forget. Exactly what it means to take action. All right, here we go. So. And we've got three. Three items that, you know, actually, um, if it is worded like this, I would feel more comfortable. Um, of course. Trying to get it to fit on the screen. Trying to get it to fit on the screen. There we go. Can people read that okay now?
If we could, uh, rephrase the last bullet. Cause I, I don't think that's directly an issue for this annexation. That's a general desire.
Yeah, I agree with John. It's hard to pin that on this point, this, this application.
Does that read better if we say that this annexation results in more predictable outcomes to address Boulder's missing goals?
I, in, in some ways, I think it does because, because I think from my perspective, what I don't want to see is a bunch of million dollar luxury townhomes being built here either, right? Cause I think that misses the point of what was negotiated. So a little more clarity around that would be helpful. And, and at least putting the stake in there so that when we come back and revisit this, when we go for a site tour five years from now, we'll see what actually happened here.
Helen, do you see anything problematic with this?
When, when you say addressed, it's not quite clear to me if, if you want to see change in that regard, or if you just like to understand it better. And, and it differ for, for each of the three points, but I, I think it would be helpful if it was a little bit more clear in that regard.
Um, yeah. So, um, what would be a wording instead of just saying be addressed that might, uh, get to what we're looking for here? Is the, they're all concerns by members of planning board.
Desire for this annexation to result in more predictable outcomes that conform to Boulder's missing metal housing strategy. That was referenced in the packet and in, uh, so.
Right. I think that Helen is just talking about this, this wording up here, be addressed.
Sorry.
Yeah. And, and how that interfaces with, with those three bullet points, you know, when, when we were talking and it sounded like maybe what's proposed is perfectly fine. You just didn't feel like you had all of the information to make that determination, right? So under, under that circumstance, that maybe you're not asking for any change. And I think that part, if, if, if that interpretation of mine is correct, but I think that's not quite clear at this point in this motion.
Yeah. And, um, so it seems to me that, um, and I'll, I'll turn to Georgie and John for what, what you feel, um, should happen, but, uh, um, the, the concern was that there was missing information more than anything else, right? So, uh, the following, uh, concerns of uh, of incomplete information or something. The, the, the following concern, concerns of lack of, of clarity.
Yeah, because I, I think the question is, right? I, I don't. I think what was interesting about the word being, be addressed is, well, let me say what I want, then I'll try to wordsmith it, that, the, the, if people agree, which is we, we need more detail. And then based on that detail, this needs to be amended to, um, to accommodate for that. So if, if we go through that, for instance, if we got more detail around the economics of the project, uh, and the cash and lose should really be fifty thousand dollars a unit, not twenty five thousand. I don't want to approve this with twenty five thousand, knowing that we should be getting fifty thousand. Right?
Maybe, maybe it would be, um, that council determine through additional information, what, what you described, Georgie. That twenty five thousand is adequate or, or should it be more?
Yeah.
Um, something like this with the condition that city council request additional information on the following prior to final approval.
And, and consider the following. I mean, it's not just the information. We want them to think about it and make sure that the right thing is happening.
Requesting consider additional information on the following.
Or make, or analyze, make it even.
Analyze? I, I don't know. Um, I think that usually we consider the approving bodies uh, considering in their judgment, right? So I don't know. Do people like analyze?
I'm okay with either.
Do, do we want to say uncertainty as to, or do we just want to say the number and type of dwelling units that would be built?
Yeah, maybe we should get rid of the little judgment things.
Yeah. Um, and I, I would get rid of the word eventually, just because I don't, I'm not sure it adds anything to the meaning.
And, um,
How this annexation might address Boulder's missing middle goals or would address? Or could?
Is that better?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. Do people kind of like what, where we're going with this?
Yeah, nice job, David and everyone.
Well, since I did the typing, I'll let someone else make, uh, make motions if they're willing to do that.
I'll make the, I make a motion as written.
Right, um, uh, want me to read it? Um, Peter moves, uh, to, uh, recommend to city council approval of the annexation agreement amendment L U R twenty twenty one dash zero 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 forty five as it is consistent with the overall goals, policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan for, uh, pertaining to annexation as well as the intent of the original annexation terms with the condition that city council requesting consider additional information on the following prior to final approval. The number and type of dwelling units that would be built, whether the city could maximize the per dwelling unit cash and low amount beyond twenty five thousand per new dwelling unit, since this is significantly less than would be paid under today's includes the housing program. And how this annexation could address Boulder's missing middle goals. Do I have a second? George.
My second, I'm sorry.
Georgie had, uh, went first on that one. So we've got a motion on the table from John, seconded by Georgie, uh, discussion on this motion. Did anybody see some wording changes while?
Um, I think you caught it, David, but I, I think you, um, verbally struck the second policies.
Yeah, you're right. I stumbled over that, didn't I? I do a lot of reading this chair. I'm going to be a, I'll, I'll have to read the children after this, like Dr. Seuss books and stuff. All right. Other, other, uh, any other, uh, discussion on this motion? Okay, we've got a motion on the table rather than restating it. I'll just go ahead and say that it is there up on the screen. Um, you can see it. And with that, um, if there's no further discussion, I'll, I'll call it a vote. Peter.
Hi.
But John.
Hi.
Georgie.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Okay, I'll vote I on this. Good job, everybody. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks so much.
Great points, great points, Georgie and John. I'm glad we got him in there.
Okay. And we'll let council, uh, take it from there. Um, and, uh, I, I'm just stopping sharing so I can say Don and, uh, uh, Michael and, uh, every, everyone from the applicant team, thanks so much for, uh, bearing with us on this and, uh, and for working with, uh, with Kurt and Sloan and the team. Uh, thank you, Kurt and Sloan. Um, Kurt, did you have something you wanted to add before we finish up?
Um, I did. I just wanted to thank you for, uh, your contributions to this conversation. And, um, I think that will certainly, um, help us as we go to city council.
Great. Appreciate that. Awesome. Uh, any other, anything, anybody who's got the ability time you wants to say before we move on? There's a lot of people in the room. All right. Thanks so much, everybody. Hey. Bye bye, Don. All right, guys. So, um, with that, what time are we at? Um, we could, well, does, do people think they need another break now, another five minutes? Um, and then or shall we go ahead and start the next item and go more like till about? Yeah, let's go more like ninety minutes since the last break. So with that, let's go ahead and go to the next public hearing item, which is, um, number four B, I believe. Um, so this one is, um, public hearing and, uh, planning board consideration of a site review for fire station number three, L U R twenty twenty one dash zero 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 one seven. And, uh, motion to approve an amendment to the transit village area plan T V A P. Um, uh, thirtieth street cross section. Uh, so, um, again, I had to check with Helen to make sure I got this right. Uh, but, um, uh, number one, the site review is quasi judicial, so please do, uh, let us know if you had any ex parte communications with regards to the fire station as well as any potential conflict in interest with regards to T V A P. Uh, that's legislative, so you, uh, are welcome to have spoken with the public about legislative items like, uh, the T V A P, um, cross section. So any disclosures anybody would like to reveal? All right.
I've.
John, go ahead.
I've cruised around there about a hundred times on my bicycle, but, uh, not to have any indiscreet conversations with anybody.
Yeah, I've, uh, certain, I certainly use the thirtieth street corridor a lot and we'll be talking a bit about it tonight, I'm sure. Great. All right. Well, with that then, um, I know we have Elaine with us, Charles. I'll let you introduce the.
Yeah, thanks so much. Elaine McLaughlin will be presenting staff's analysis tonight, but I did want to make note of the fact that we have Edward Stafford, our engineering on the call this evening, um, in case there's questions related to the thirtieth street, street section and the T V A P amendment. So, um, happy to have Edward here. Uh, Elaine, please feel free to take it away.
You bet. Thanks, Charles. Good evening, everyone. Um, we'll just do a, a brief overview of where we're headed this evening roadmap. We'll take a look at the site context, including the built environment, uh, transportation, along with, um, the, uh, site, the existing site and the proposed project. There's a couple of key issues to look at. Um, we'll touch briefly on, uh, some of the criteria to make those determinations. And, uh, then there's a couple of motions for planning board's consideration. So in terms of the location, while most of us are probably familiar with it, the new fire station three site is located on thirtieth near Belmont. It's intended to replace that existing fire station that's located at the southwest corner of Arapahoe and thirtieth. And fire stations are considered critical facilities under the city's code. And because the current locations in the high hazard and hundred year flood zone, it makes access to critical areas of the city even more challenging than, um, usual during a flood event. So then when we look a little bit closer, the site was, um, reviewed as a concept plan a little over a year ago, December twenty twenty. So most of you are probably familiar with, uh, the context. It's, um, located on the west side of thirtieth. It's, uh, currently vacant. It was formerly an R B, um, storage and sales facility and a vacant parking lot. And in the context of thirtieth street, which we're also discussing this evening, it's important to note that there currently is no on-street parking on either the west or east side of, uh, the street. In terms of the built context in recent years, many properties on the west side of thirtieth street from Belmont to Mapleton, surrounding this site have become vacant. Uh, but previously there were mostly, uh, things like auto, dealerships, um, storage facilities and so forth. Um, but adjacent to the site on the north is a small grocery store along with convenience store and gas station. To the south, the former Rob's Music Site, it's currently vacant. Uh, just west of the site is an existing office building and the Ledges Apartments. And, uh, northwest service commercial uses everything from auto repair and used furniture store. Directly east of the site, uh, is the Steelyards Neighborhood. It's primarily mixed use and then uh, small pet supply company as well as some other service commercial uses. And then approximately one block east is the Spark Neighborhood. We'll talk a little bit about that, um, in more detail. Uh, comprehensive plan land use is mixed use business. It's defined as consisting of business or residential uses. And housing and public uses supporting housing will be encouraged and may be required. Zoning is business transition. One, it's defined in the business as business areas, um, which generally buffer a residential area from a major street, primarily used for commercial and complementary uses. And you may recall that there was a BBCP land use change done in late twenty twenty as part of the midterm update. Um, the site was part of a land use map change from mixed use industrial and service commercial to mixed use business. It was intended to implement T V A P land use, um, transit village area plan land use. And of course, the intent was to allow future rezonings, uh, with redevelopment as part of phase two of T V A P. And in this case, the applicant chose not to rezone as the proposal was already designed to be in keeping with the BT one zoning and the, uh, transit village area plan guidelines. Site is part of phase two of T V A P and, um, the transit village area plan was adopted in two thousand and seven to guide redevelopment of the area that's surrounding the transit um, in the RTD space. And it's hard to recall, but it was mostly an underutilized industrial area and the intent was to transform it to be a more urban, higher density pedestrian oriented environment with a mix of the uses. And so as a part of the T V A P plan, a land use map was adopted. And, uh, phase two of T V A P was initiated with that, um, twenty twenty midterm update to the BBCP. And what prompted initiation of that phase two A is that phase one is essentially built out over the past fifteen years and it was guided by the vision and goals of T V A P, really to um, ensure that about fourteen hundred new residential units, um, were built. And that's about where we're at today. Just under three hundred of those are permanently affordable residential units and these images include, uh, the neighborhoods of Spark and Boulder Commons on the north. Um, and you can see in the center thirty Pearl and Depot Square, um, with the regional RTD bus facility at the center and then Rev on the south. And phase one also included build out of a number of streets per the connections plan that was also adopted as part of T V A P and those include Junction Place, Bluff Street Extension, New Thirty First and Spruce Streets. There were two bridges that were constructed as part of this that essentially connects Junction Place from Prairie all the way up to Belmont now. And then alleys and passeos were also built. And so when we zoom in a bit, you'll note that there's three planned connections um, on the site, including the new Bluff Street Extension that has a flexible alignment. That's what that, uh, map note is about. Um, a west alley link and a north sidewalk that's shown on the planet purple. There's also existing and proposed multi-use paths as well as separated bike lanes. There's also existing and proposed multi-use paths, as well as separated bike lanes as part of the recently adopted low stress walk and bike network plan, part of the city's T M P that surround that the site and connect throughout the city, as you can see. And then being part of the Transit Village Area Plan, it's of course a transit rich context with R T D facility and then several bus stops nearby. And so on to the existing site, the applicants proposing an approximately twenty eight thousand square foot two-story fire station with administration offices, four large apparatus space on the first floor, along with training and fitness and meeting rooms on that ground floor. The second floor is proposed to have essentially the living space with bunk rooms, kitchen facilities and an outdoor deck. You can also see on the second floor, there's a green roof plan with landscaping ground level, the extension of Bluff Street on the ground level, street scapeing on thirtieth. The new alley and then the applicants also proposing a fifty-five percent parking reduction. So as you can see from this diagram, the buildings designed such that emergency vehicle circulation is planned in a one-way configuration goes into the site at Bluff Street, circulates around the alley and then extends into the apparatus space and then exits directly on the thirtieth. And this was intentionally done so that those large fire apparatus trucks don't have to back on the thirtieth. And as you can see in the perspectives, the proposed building is contemporary in style. There's a nod to the traditional red firehouse. You can see plans also illustrate a somewhat dramatic floating roof form that you can see is open to the sky above the green roof, and there's broad overhangs that are supported by natural stained glue lamp beams in a essentially V columns along with concrete pilasters. And those are also shown over the apparatus base that opened to thirtieth street. So for key issue one and consistency with the site review criteria, staff notes that there are several B B C P policies that are addressed with the proposed fire station. A number of them relating to urban design, and we'll talk about those in a little bit with regard to the T V A P guidelines, but also in particular, policy eight point oh seven, which has to do with provision of safety and addressing needs of the community. In particular, providing for services that result from changing demographics and redevelopment in urbanizing areas. And in that regard, staff points over to the left side of the screen, which is to support the goals of T V A P that also indicated or anticipated placement of the fire station three near the Transit Village to respond to this redeveloping area. And then regarding site review criteria for energy efficiency, staff notes that the building's proposed to be net zero with rooftop P V array. The east, west and south facades have those large overhangs. As you can see, it's intended to shade the glass in the hot summer months, and then of course let in passive solar in the winter months. And then the applicants also proposing that green roof using seed implantings. Touching on other site review criteria related to design for human scale and transparency and activity at the pedestrian level. Staff notes that the administration offices will add active uses at the pedestrian level with broad ground floor windows facing the street. There's public art landscaping, design details that will all lead to a vibrant pedestrian experience as expected in this criterion. There's other elements that include the steel canopy over windows. There is also this extruded brick detail on the gray brick walls. And then other durable materials also include the metal panel. Criteria one asks if the building height, mass scale and architecture are compatible with the area established by adopted design guidelines. And so in that regard, staff prepared a consistency analysis with the T V A P design guidelines that are in your packet. And that speaks to designing to the pedestrian like the site review criteria, orienting the sods to the street, providing open space areas. And then also providing for permeability on the site, which as you can see, the applicant is fulfilling with the sidewalks and of course the alley and then that access with the extension of Bluff Street. And then also the guidelines look to providing furnishings such as art, planters, benches and staff finds it to be consistent with this guideline as well. And then for key issue two, staff recommends the T V A P street scape guidelines for thirtieth street cross section be amended to remove the on-street parking. And you can see the existing cross section there on the left and then the proposed on the right. As noted in the staff memo, this would implement the recommendations of the low stress walk and bike network of the T M P that identified the need for protected bike lanes on thirtieth. Staff notes that on-street parking would impact the operation and essentially the comfort of the protected bike lane. And additionally, staff notes that the existing rights of way on thirtieth may preclude the ability for both the on-street parking and the protected bike lane in different sections of thirtieth street. So as shown on the right, the revised cross section is also proposed to remove trees and grates, which are probably appropriate more to support on on-street parking in a downtown setting or in a parking district setting. And instead proposes an eight-foot wide street scape planting strip from the curb face along with a detached ten-foot walk. And when T V A P was adopted in two thousand and seven, the plan recognized the need for additional engineering to study the feasibility of on-street parking on thirtieth. The purpose of the engineering study was really to examine the feasibility and including impacts and safety operations of the multimodal street for on-street parking, along with exact alignment of the street related to existing buildings and constraints of having to provide parking on narrow properties or near traffics or signals. And so the engineering study was not completed. The development in the areas continued without the study and now with the recent T M P update, staff does not recommend further study efforts for this particular existing cross cross section, and instead we are recommending that that on-street parking be eliminated. In addition, the section of the guidelines that's shown in the green box staff's recommending would be removed because of the reference to on-street parking. So then the approach to amending the cross section is addressed in T V A P as noted in the street scape guidelines section of the of the T V A P. The guidelines were created to plan and develop new streets and to acquire reservations for rights of way. And as we've seen with that phase one, the the plans did achieve that with new connectivity. The connections plan was adopted with objectives that include establishing the pedestrian friendly environment, creating safe and convenient access to transit and so forth. And so as we noted earlier, it was really to break up the big super blocks, create a more fine-grained pattern of streets. And so it's noted as well that T V A P does provide a means to amend the connections plan, which is processed in conjunction, can be processed in conjunction with the site review, and it references a table to discern the approval requirements for amendments. And in this case, you can see that this particular consideration doesn't necessarily neatly fit into relocation of or additions of streets or eliminations of streets, multi-use paths, et cetera. And so in this case, because the amendments to a street scape guideline and not to an actual street being removed or moved, what have you, the amendment is considered legislative in nature, and that's what requires planning board and council. So with that, staff recommends two motions to approve the site review and then the change to the T V A P street scape guideline. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much, Elaine. Great presentation and great, great graphics, so we can understand what's going on. Appreciate it. So with that, let's open it up to questions. Let others start off. I do have questions if others don't. Looking for hands. Gosh. I have a significant number of questions, so I guess I'll start. So the concept review time, Elaine, I know that that planning board had mentioned looking at whether some of the parking could be moved to the rear. Was that looked at? I think it's pretty much the same as it was at concept review time, which is fine, but I just wondered if you remember if that was asked and answered.
Well, the T V A P guidelines do talk about either having it at the rear of the property or screening it. And so in this case, because they did reduce parking by fifty-five percent. The way we looked at it is with the one row of parking essentially in front of the the building on the south side, that was about as far as you could get without having to reduce parking further. And some of that, of course, has to do with that circulation pattern of using Bluff Street in a one-way circulation for emergency vehicles that I think it would be very challenging to get additional parking at the rear. So we felt satisfied it met the guidelines with the screening and other amenities on the street scape.
Sounds good. Okay. John. Oh, sorry, I wasn't watching. John, you've you've done mute.
You missed all those brilliant remarks. Is there some public meeting room on the ground floor in the in the new building? I recall we talked about that at concept review, but I wasn't clear here.
Yep, they are illustrating meeting spaces that could be used for committee members or as part of the administration, but they do have meeting room spaces on the ground floor.
Okay, thank you.
And I think at concept review time, we had a phased approach, and it looks like it's all being done in one phase now.
That's right. Yeah, it's all being built out. At the time, yeah, the administration portion wasn't going to get built out and my understanding is now they have the funding to move forward. And you can talk to the applicant about that if you'd like.
That's good news. All right. Anyone else want to take a test? All right, so Elaine, I wanted to talk about the the street cross section. I think you probably remember I was on the thirtieth and Colorado corridor study. And their cross section recommended for the portion of thirtieth that goes, I think, between Arapahoe and well, Arapahoe and yes, Colorado. So you know, past the Carpenter Pool in that area, which has a little bit of more area to work with. It shows a raised curb between the bike path and the driving lanes. And that, and then other than that, it's pretty close to this cross cut, except that it doesn't have the center trees. Is that, was it considered to put a raised, a raised curb between the cars and the and the bikes so that they have, they're really protected and not just buffered?
You know, I'm going to suggest Edward Stafford join us because he probably has a little bit more info on that than I do.
Great. Thanks, Edward. Appreciate you being here.
Good evening. Thank you. Edward Stafford, Senior Manager of Civil Engineering and Planning and Development Services. So that is an option to be considered for the future still on thirtieth. As additional studies are being planned as a part of the current work program, this recommendation doesn't preclude those opportunities. It could not be implemented just in front of the fire station. So trying to do raised curb protected bike lane in that short frontage stretch produces challenges with maintenance operations, drainage, all types of things that you really need to be able to do a longer stretch. So it wasn't considered specific to this project. But the modification to the street cross section doesn't preclude that opportunity as part of a larger capital project on thirtieth in the future.
So is there anything being done with this project that makes it, you know, kind of, you know, much more expensive to then we go and redo it if we we come up with a better solution in the future? Because that 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 kind of, you know, that kind of concerns me is like, once you start down a path of doing it without the, you know, the physical protection or the raised curb, it just becomes prohibitively expensive to redo it if if we decide to do it a different way elsewhere.
Yeah, I mean, generally, I wouldn't say there's something in this project that's going to make it more expensive than it would have been to implement in this quarter, should we desire. I mean, it's really not possible to build that elevated piece again in that short stretch here. And so there could be some future reconstruction within the pavement area. Quite honestly, most of what already exists today. So this project on its frontage will only have a slight amount of paving and then movement of the curb to put in the initial buffered bike lane.
Okay, so as buffered, we're really talking about pretty much the same thing that we have today, or is it going to be a little wider?
No, it's wider with a buffer space, so it includes both the bike lane and several feet of buffer separation. It's just that it's at grade.
Okay, but no, like, yeah, because the thirtieth in Colorado recommendations have a street lamp shown in that little curb area. So there's a little bit more, but okay. All right, well, if that's, I guess, then I would, I would also ask, is there a way we can document? I was looking Elaine at the that text associated with the cross cut. And I was thinking maybe we could just reuse that because it does talk a little bit about the larger context. And I thought it might make sense to, you know, to consider putting some text in there that would say how it, you know, this cross section could be modified based on other things and maybe even reference the thirtieth in Colorado recommendation as well. You know, I had some ideas about that, but I don't know if you'd be open to something like that. Just if we put this in there, we could at least leave the window open to you know, if the Colorado, or I'm sorry, if the what's the word I'm looking for the? Sorry. I'm spacing out. The core arterial network work comes up with some additional recommendations, and we got a capital improvement for some more comprehensive stuff. Is there a way we could kind of telegraph that in words? That it could eventually align with a with a more master plan?
We certainly could. I don't know that it's necessary. There's nothing that precludes that there will be future potential modifications to this cross section that would occur with the core arterial network, the CAN plan studies that have been proposed for the future. We don't necessarily have to state that that will happen here, just as this modification is happening today. That modification could happen in the future with a study and an updated master plan or updated plan. I'd be hesitant to try and reference other plans like thirtieth in Colorado, given that they just haven't been evaluated for this particular area. And so it's not necessarily a connection or a link there. We want to be careful about how we do that right now, in whether or not that could even pre suppose decisions to be made in those future studies. And what we're really trying to ensure is that they all options can still be open in those future studies for what thirtieth will look like within its confined cross section.
Okay, thanks, Edward. Appreciate it. And thank you, Elaine. Any other questions? All right. Sorry, I'm just checking because great. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and close the question period. Thank you again for that, and we'll move on then to the applicant presentation. Do we have Adam here, Adam Goldstone? Are you going to be starting this off?
Yeah, hi there.
Welcome.
Hopefully you can hear me okay. I'm in a lobby of a hotel in Albuquerque here on a little road trip, so bear with me if you hear any noises. So first off, I just want to, my name's Adam Goldstone, Senior Project Manager with the Facilities Department, been working on this project with our folks over at the Fire Department. I want to thank you for the opportunity to share this incredible new fire station project with you all. The new station is a critical infrastructure The new station is a critical infrastructure component for the city of Boulder, especially in light of events, you know, that have occurred over the past year. It was approved by voters via the CCS tax and is now about five years in the making to get to this point. The existing station, as Elaine mentioned, that it will replace, is almost sixty years old, woefully inadequate for today's firefighting needs and located in several flood zones. Our team has developed an exciting project that not only addresses the Fire Department's needs for the next century, but achieves the city's important climate and resiliency goals. There will be no natural gas use at this facility, and the roof was designed to maximize the use of PV panels to try to get us to a net zero energy usage. It will also incorporate, as again, as Elaine mentioned, the TVAP's goals by widening the street, improving the street frontage, and extending bluff street for future connections. We're excited to keep this project moving forward with the goal of starting construction later this year. I'll turn it over to our architect consultant that has a brief presentation. But then myself and representatives from the Fire Department are available for any questions you may have at the end. Thank you.
Hey, guys, this is Will Bessard. I'm gonna leave my video off, I guess. But Elaine kind of went over the whole project as far as we know it, and as far as we've developed it to this point. I think Adam's notes on sustainability and a well-designed hundred-year facility are probably our biggest talking points to why this is such an important building and why we've designed it the way we have. His leadership and just working with the city of Boulder so far has been been a great experience. And your goals are exactly why we do architecture, because we want to build something that'll last a really long time, that helps people and is a catalyst to the community. So with that, I think you've kind of seen what it looks like from the outside. We've talked about how it functions a little bit with the with the bluff street and the one-way apparatus moving through the site and how it gets onto thirtieth street and you know, improves response times and all that great stuff that a new fire station should do, so. Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what else you guys need to know, but I mean, I could talk all day about it if you wanted me to.
All right, well, I think it's perfectly fine to to have a verbal presentation that doesn't go up to the full fifteen minutes. That's great. That certainly gives us the opportunity then to ask you any questions that we might have. Anything else you wanted to cover before we open it up to questions?
I would, I would like to just comment real quick on a couple of questions that already came up. Parking in the rear, you know, we did, we did look at that when we had to place the alley. Anyways, you know, we decided to turn that into the circulation for the fire trucks, and so that kind of reduced some of the area there, so we tried to take advantage of the space we were losing for that. And then what you saw at concept review, the phased approach was was kind of a worst-case scenario if if funding wasn't working out. You know, if we had to pivot and and kind of do a reduced scope to get this thing going, but that's since been sorted out, and that's why you see the entire station as presented right now.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Michael, I see you're here from Fire Rescue. Appreciate you joining us. Shall we just open up for questions? All right, anyone have questions? Or applicants here? So, one thing, I know that our Community Cycles folks have asked about bluff street having a, you know, turn lane and and a straight-on lane coming out, I think. So there's like one lane in and two lanes out. Is that correct? I don't know if this is a question for you, but is that necessary? I know that there are bike safety issues when you have, like, possibly a left turner and then people coming up on the right, and I know, Ed, that might be a question for you as well.
Happy to address that, actually, because it's independent of this particular site review and that it's improvements that are off-site from this property. But that design has been looked at and was actually provided through our transportation and mobility. There are safety and operations reasons to have those separated lanes in order to separate those left turns, more predictable for people looking to make movements in the gaps. Provides a better opportunity for how we use to operate the traffic signal to provide protective movements for bikes, pets, and left turners, potentially, depending on what we need there. If we were to not build it out with that amount of space, that lineage, then we would limit our opportunities for how we could operate that traffic signal. And for our traffic operations staff, they feel that would actually be a negative overall to all modes. And so that's why this is the design that they've been working on as a part of a capital design project for the traffic signal there for that ultimate intersection.
Okay. All right, other questions? Yeah, I feel like most of the questions we have are kind of related to the street treatments and the surrounding circulation, which was pretty much the same that I saw in the concept review as well. So I think it speaks to how important we feel public safety is and what a great addition this is going to be. So we'll see how people feel in liberation. So if there are no more questions, we'll go ahead and close that off and then and and open up the public hearing. We are almost to, yeah, we're a little ways since we last took a break. So why don't we go ahead and take four minutes so people get a chance to stretch their legs if you need something to drink and come back at about twenty-one after the hour. And we'll do the public hearing at that point. All right, I see people are back. Let's see, do we have everybody? Yeah, we do. Thanks for returning promptly from break. And I also want to recognize, I don't know if I've mentioned, usually we have Cindy Spence here and we have Amanda Cusworth and I see Holly Openski is here helping us out today too. So thank you so much for all the help as with administratively, along with Gene Getzis. So with that, let's go ahead and, excuse me, open up the public hearing for the fire station item. Anyone from the public is welcome to talk to us for three minutes. Please state your name and where you live. And again, we're asking you to let us know if you're representing anyone other than yourself, an organization, or anyone associated with the project. So I see Kurt's hand, Kurt Nordbeck, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Great, Kurt Nordbeck, seven-seven-seven Delwood Avenue, speaking tonight on the half of Community Cycles. We sent you a letter, and both of the issues that we raised in our letter have been discussed a little bit tonight, so thank you very much for that. The first one relates to the street cross section on thirtieth. As was discussed, the core arterial network that council unanimously supported in their recent retreat will be looking at this north thirtieth street section. And so that could obviously affect the, what will get developed here in the long term. It would be a terrible shame to build a particular cross section for this property and then have the plan change and have to rip it out. So our, really, our request is that when the you request to counsel that this north thirtieth street study be prioritized, given that this project is going on in order to hopefully avoid any kind of waste like that. The second item relates to, as discussed, the the street cross section of Bluff and the two outgoing lanes. The, we, the, we feel that this is not a safe or comfortable configuration or a necessary configuration for motor vehicle efficiency, given the small amount of traffic that will be outgoing there on Bluff. And thirtieth street going southbound is a little bit downhill, so bikes will be going relatively fast. Hopefully, there will be a lot of pedestrian traffic along thirtieth, at least eventually. And having these two outgoing lanes, it really interferes with the movement of pedestrians in the crosswalk and and bikes on a bike lane, a protected lane or whatever it may end up being. And it's really a safety hazard. And so we understand that transportation feels, for whatever reason, that they want this. But our request, again, would be that council at least address this and try to get clearer clearer responses from transportation about why exactly they need this. So those are our two requests, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Okay, I'm looking to see if we have anyone else who would like to speak to us tonight. I see Lynn Segal has her hand up. Lynn, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah, it looks like a fabulous fire station, and I'll be glad to not use it, hopefully, but I'm certainly humbled by the Marshall Fire, so. And especially with three-eleven and all that fuel that's being built up right by me at Sixth and Dewey. Now, this isn't going to be my fire station. I would take it. There's one closer, but we'll need all that we can get. With that last fire, we had these two going up on North Foothills and still don't know the reason for those. I'd like a little bit faster reaction and as to the causes of these fires. Because I think that's relevant constantly now, you know, I think all of Boulder is kind of humbled by this experience. But anyway, it's a fabulous-looking station and all the green elements, pretty cool. I'm sure that that Edward and and Elaine did a great job and that the biking situation will be worked out appropriately, and I'm glad they got their funding. And so it looks like a good deal there. I'm glad there's a meeting room that can be occasionally used by folks in the neighborhood, I guess. Sounds like, and very dynamic-looking building. Thanks a lot. Bye.
Thank you, Lynn. All right. I don't see any more hands, so we'll give it another couple seconds. All right, thank you, thank you both for speaking to us tonight. Any responses from from you on anything you heard, Adam, or any anyone on the staff or applicant team? Michael, did you want to chime in?
You bet. I just want to thank you all. Want to introduce myself, Mike Algar, I was the fire chief, and I'll just say a couple of things. One, to Lynn's point, this station actually, I know what she means, but this is not my fire station, but actually all of them will probably be your fire station. They would, they would be responding from all those locations. I know what you meant. It, the, the space that we're talking about is really multifunctional. I, I know it will be put into the pool of space that the city will have for residents to use and other organizations. But it's intended to be that way. And so the idea behind fire stations of the future is that they're community assets. It's one of the reasons it's being moved to begin with, because it is in a floodplain and shouldn't be. But it is something that is really for the community, about the community, and is intended to be used by the community and not just for firefighters. So I just wanted to throw that out there. And, and the other piece on the administrative part, it is good that we got more funding to finish the project. The administrative offices, we gave up actually a couple of years ago when COVID hit. I no longer have administrative offices. I'm, I'm using space at our training center, which is out at the rez, and so we're on borrowed time. So we're kind of in a crunch as well to get our people into more permanent administrative offices. So, so that's some of the logic too behind moving forward with it as quickly as we can. And thank you again. Good evening. And thank you again. Good evening.
Great. Thanks for taking the opportunity to address us, Michael. We really appreciate it. Great. Any other comments from the applicant or the staff? So if that's the case, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to deliberation. We were given two key issues tonight. The first one being is the proposed project on balance consistent with site review criteria, including the TVAP guidelines. And are we okay with a 55% parking reduction? So anyone want to kick us off on that? Go ahead, Georgie.
I'll be short and sweet. I wanted to mention to to Michael too. And I took several years ago, I took the citizens fire training course and got a chance to spend eight weeks going around the different stations. I know the Arapahoe Station well. I was shocked at the condition of our stations and 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 the the tape and strings that the fire department has put together to to keep us safe in the city. And I am thrilled that you found a site and are moving forward with this quickly. I believe it meets both criteria we're looking at tonight and look forward to voting yes for it and for it to go as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Peter.
Well put, Georgie. I didn't do the course or the tours you took, but everything else you said was from the heart and well put. And I couldn't agree more.
Great. Anyone else want to comment on on key issue one? John? Oh, you're muted.
Just like to say that I I think it's needed and looks like it'll be a beautiful building. So congratulations on a very attractive design. Hope it works well for you.
You want to chime in before I sum it up, Lisa? You're okay?
It's a good building, good cause, excited it's moving forward and glad you can do it all in one go. It's great.
Great. And I'll just say, you know, having went over the concept review and looked at all our comments, and I really feel like a lot of the things that we said back at concept review time have been well addressed. It's a beautiful building with a lot of really nice street presence. It will be, you know, really add a lot to that area. I think that that it's got a nice gracious entry. And yeah, I think I think there's just really no nothing to really discuss with any of the site review criteria. So good job, everybody. And we'll be looking forward to having that additional protection on 30th Street. So I think with key issue one, it sounds like everybody's pretty good. We'll go ahead and move then on to key issue two. Does the planning board support the proposed amendment to the TVAP cross section for 30th Street to eliminate on-street parking and provide a detached walkway adjacent to the site and add a planting strip in lieu of trees in grates? Anyone want to comment on this? All right. Your people seem pretty warm to it. So yeah, I mean, I'll I'll go ahead and just make make my speech on this one. You know, I people know that I'm avid biker and I do bike these corridors all the time. I'm very excited to see that there's interest and support from the council on prioritizing the arterial network. I do, you know, we we get frustrated, you know, it was five years ago that I was on like 30th and Colorado corridor study and people know what the really good bike and pedestrian solutions look like. And I just think it's a shame that we haven't completed those studies before we get to this point. There is no way I would ever want to delay this project to wait for a study. So I support making this change to the to the TVAP area plan. Removing the parking is absolutely makes sense. I mean, there's I haven't found anybody in Boulder who thinks that there should be parking along there. So so that's the major thing. It's just the minor things that we we kind of cringe because we we know that you know, we could be looking at treatment along 30th that would make sense, that would have the bike path co-co-located with the with the sidewalk and separated from the street by the trees. The you know, and but but we don't have guidance to make that happen in this case, and it probably would increase the cost if we did, but we would have done it as part of an overall 30th Street from Iris all the way down to baseline. So I did want to take time to acknowledge that. I've talked a lot with TAB members about this. I've talked a lot with Community Cycle members about this. We it's not the fault of the, you know, it really isn't this project. So I don't want to make it seem like I'm I'm being negative about fire station number three. But we won't be able to compete with the likes of Copenhagen and Amsterdam if we don't start to make ourselves serious about really good consistent treatments of our bicycle and pedestrian corridors. So that's my speech. And that doesn't mean that I would add anything to any motions. I definitely support this change to the to the TVAP area plan. Any other comments before we put it up for motions? Anyone interested in making a motion? And Amanda, if you are able to put up the recommended motion language, that would be awesome.
Sure, happy to share it.
Do I see your hand?
Yeah, I I'll read it into the record once I can see it. Sorry, Tom.
Good.
Can you all see this?
It should be coming up. It's not quite.
It's just taking its time.
Still just kind of a blank screen for me.
Maybe I'll turn my camera off, and maybe that will help. Sorry, it's freezing.
Amanda, I've got it handy if you'd like me to share.
Okay, sure.
Great.
If we've learned anything, it's we should have the fire department run some of our meetings.
Actually, if I even have it up, if you want me to show it then.
Are you not seeing it? Because I've got it up on my screen.
Oh, you know what? It's I think, Mandy, you have to stop sharing. Because we're still.
Amanda is frozen.
Yeah, this is why I don't buy the whole metaverse thing quite yet.
Can you see mine?
No, there we go. Yes. Okay. I move to approve, Site Review Case Number LUR 2021 00017, incorporating staff memorandum and the attached review criteria checklist as findings of fact and subject to the conditions of approval recommended in the staff memorandum. And then, yeah.
Second, I think I saw Peter's second first. So we have a motion put forth by Lisa Smith, seconded by Peter. It is the motion you see on your screen here for LUR 2021 dash 00017. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, well, let's put it up for a vote. Peter?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
John? Georgie?
Hi.
When I vote aye on that. Okay, so the site review is approved. Lisa, did you want to take us through the second motion as well?
Sure. Motion to approve an amendment or I move to approve an amendment to the Transit Village area plan to change the 30th Street cross section so as to remove on-street parking and replace trees and grates with an eight-foot wide, I think the word foot should be in there, on streetscape planting strip and 10-foot wide detached sidewalk and protected bike lanes per the Transportation Master Plan, including text amendments as provided in the staff memo.
You have a second on that one? John, John seconds that one. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Just to add the word foot after eight.
That makes sense. So I could reread it, but I'll just say that the motion is on the screen with the word foot between eight and wide streetscape. And with that, I'll go ahead and call it for a vote. Peter?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Georgie?
Hi.
And I'll vote aye on that as well. Well, congratulations and thank you again.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, nice shot. Great building.
Thank you.
Did we have a did we have a second on that motion? Just making sure.
We did from John Gerst.
Perfect.
Great. All right. Well, Peter, thank you for staying with us.
Thank you all.
And we'll move on to our matters, which is a discussion. We have one item in matters and then we'll go on to our regular debriefs and everything, but Amanda, did you want to lead us through the discussion on the change in the city council meeting day?
No, I think I could probably help support that. Since Cindy's absence, and this is really more informational, but so I think as most folks know, city council has expressed a desire to shift their meeting day from Tuesdays to Thursdays. The shift will occur in July when they return from their summer recess. So we're currently in the throes of trying to understand internally what that means for the rest of our boards. That meet throughout the week. We have meetings Monday through Thursday a couple of times a month. So the, I think the simplest solution is to just merely flip-flop planning board and city councils meeting days. So move planning board to Tuesdays and have council meet on Thursdays. That seems to be the most disruptive or the least disruptive solution for all the other boards and commissions that meet on Mondays and Wednesdays. So just wanted to open it up to the board for discussion, wanted to talk about availability and understand if Tuesdays beginning in July would work for the board. And if not, we'll have to start looking at some other alternatives. So I guess I would put it back to the board for a little bit of discussion on availability on Tuesday nights and what your thoughts and feelings might be.
Great. Thank you, Charles. And I know that Cindy also asked people via email to let her know if there were any concerns. And my understanding is that she didn't get any concerns. But I'll open it up. And of course, I won't be on the board after March. So it's kind of up to the three of you to let us know if you have any concerns or what you think.
At this point, I don't have any conflicts.
It's okay with me.
And do we?
George, any thoughts?
Oh, I have no issue with it.
Oh, okay, great.
Are there any other boards that might meet that night?
No. For the most part, Tuesday has always really been reserved for council. And Thursdays, for the most part, have been very strictly reserved for planning board.
It was still had that kind of strict reservation policy.
Right. Yeah. And we really try to avoid having multiple boards meeting on a single night. And if and when we do go back into having physical meetings, there's always a lot of competition over the chambers. So this seems to be the path of least resistance.
And Charles, you or Cindy might have said this or maybe an email and I missed it. Just out of curiosity, have you had the chance to think about like what that means for packets, like when when we would anticipate receiving them? And I mean, what do I mean for your workload? I suppose you can't really do much about it. It's what council wants. But but yeah, like when will we see those?
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that the board was okay with Tuesdays first, but it is going to require us to take a look at some of our internal business processes and deadlines. It certainly won't reduce the amount of time that planning board gets to spend with packets. We'll probably start sending them out again on Fridays, but we'll need to chart some of that out. But now that we know that, at least for a majority of the board, we'll start looking at those internal business processes.
Other thoughts? All right.
Thanks very much.
Well, thank you. Great. Well, let's see, that was that was easy enough. So any other matters from staff at this point?
Nothing from staff.
So from the board, I have one matter and then anybody else can jump in. I was noticing that the American Planning Association Conference is in San Diego in April, April 30th to May 3rd. And back before COVID, we used to, out of the training budget for planning board, be able to send some planning board members to these conferences. So I don't know if you have any updates on that, Charles, but and it always is nice to see if maybe if any of the new board members who have never been to one can be accommodated. But I know that Sarah and Lisa both haven't had a chance and Georgie because of COVID. So so yeah, if that is a possibility, it might be something to offer up.
And I would say that the planning board does have a training budget. In Cindy's absence, I don't have that at my fingertips. So I'm still waiting to find out what's in the budget. But if folks are interested, we can certainly look into it.
Great. Okay. Well, maybe we'll bring it up again next week when Cindy's here and then her next meeting and then maybe decide if that's something that could be done. Great.
Does anyone know offhand I'm I'm on their website, but when the next Colorado APA, the A Caro Chapter conference will be?
I believe it's in the fall. Hold on one second.
I think it usually is in the fall.
Yeah, I'm bringing it up just because if if we're bringing that forward as a question, it might make sense to bundle questions about both of those. Am I correct, David? I have some vague memory that that was something that also Plany Ward would go to from time to time, remembers would attend or not so much.
Yeah, we have sent board members to the state conference. It will be in fail this year. And it looks like you don't think we have dates yet.
I might have just found it, the 28th to 30th.
You're right, the 28th through the 30th of September. You're right.
Anyway, just bringing it up because if we bring that conversation topic back around, it might be worth talking both about national and states.
Sure. Sure. Yeah, I think the state one has a little, you know, probably a little more flexibility because it doesn't involve as much travel, but yeah. Cool. All right. Any other matters from the board? From from Helen, do you have any anything from the attorney's office?
Nothing for me.
Do we have one more meeting with you, David?
No, you have three more meetings.
Yeah, we even added an extra meeting for him.
This is a huge issue because because last year, Harmon's last meeting was the first one in March. And for some reason, this year, it's through all of March and I I'm going to Iceland on March.
I was gonna say, what what's that doing to your ski training and your races?
And I chose a race in Iceland for April 2nd, and I'm doing a skate ski race on the 31st, the day of the meeting. So I will have done a 25K skate ski race. At least it's not the 50K marathon that I'm doing two days later. But and then I have to stay up all night and talk to you guys. So I made sure.
It's at sea level, though. You're gonna be fine, right?
The place I'm staying says that they not only have good Wi-Fi, but they have an Ethernet connection. So they tell me Zoom is completely doable.
Excellent.
But I wouldn't miss my last meeting for anything. Plus, we're going to be talking about the East Boulder Subcommune Plan. So 90%. So that should be interesting. So that should be interesting. So I'll look forward to that, but yeah, three more meetings in March, so we have plenty of time with each other. Unfortunately, not in person. So great, any other, any debrief calendar check items? I guess we just did calendar check pretty much. All right. Well, thanks so much, everybody. And we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.